The only amendment we need is from $50. From $50 to $50. As presented, that's on your desk. We still refer.
Mr. President.
City Clerk, can you read the roll, please?
Yes. Counselor Capone?
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Here.
Counselor DePiero?
Here.
Counselor Hanlon?
Here.
Counselor Marchesi?
Here.
Counselor Matusky?
Here.
Counselor Napolitano?
Here.
Counselor Simonelli?
Here.
And President Delasola?
Here.
Ten members, President, uh, President, Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Stand, salute the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can my colleagues just stand for a moment of silence? I have a sad to say, a small list of, uh, people departed us. I have Andrew Russo, uh, the father Nick Russo, he also worked at Everett Housing Authority. Patrick Voltoor, retired firefighter. David Gaslick, Everett Fire Department. Nunzio Iosa, Everett Fire Department. Richard Cook, father of Stacy Cook, the collector's office. Mary Ann Baldi, father of Steve Baldi, she was also a art teacher. Anetta Bovio, Bovia, uh, of Tasty Garden, she was an owner and business person. Moment of silence, please. And also like to grant that Counselor McKinnon had a family matter tonight, was unable to make the meeting. City Clerk, can you read, uh?
So we're gonna take a motion for, um, someone to open public participation?
All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it.
Supposed to take public participation first. We only have one speaker. It's Ms. Samantha Lambert.
Please just state your name, please.
Hi, good evening, Counsel President Delasola and Counselors. My name is Samantha Lambert, a resident of Everett at 20 Pierce Ave. And thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to speak about an item that was on the agenda regarding the request to add a nuisance panhandling law. Not only is panhandling protected by the First Amendment, but my concern is that with all due respect, this is being considered at a superficial level. So in addition to living here, I've also managed the Northern Strand Community Farm on the bike trail for the last three seasons. And I've spoken to many, including some at this table in this meeting, about the population change as night falls on the trail. One individual comes to mind as I was closing up the farm and putting away the hoses, which are a little bit heavy. Uh, there was a, a man about my age, I've seen him frequently, um, on the trail. He ran over to give me a hand. And as he did so, he was asking about, you know, about the farm, what we do. And I explained how we donate the produce to the Bread of Life. And he wanted to know more about that and asked for directions. Um, so I offered him some of the produce we had actually harvested and he ate lettuce like it was, you know, a fine meal. And some, uh, the, just in conversing with him, it was just, you know, maybe some bad choices, some strokes of bad luck, um, but it led him to a place that was really difficult to pull himself out of. So I would ask that you consider, rather than place another barrier to assistance for our homeless and indig- indigenous population, I hope we can have a discussion around the resources and the root cause of why people are in this position. Um, considering a panhandling bill, uh, or considering panhandling being unlawful, would tax the resources of our officers, uh, would place financial burden on those least able to pay in fines or fees, court fees. And it, it could really just shift the problem to Chelsea if you're talking about the area on the Parkway. Um, and so instead of punishing those already struggling, I know you and the city have worked really hard to get some incredible resources available. So maybe we could talk more about how to advertise those resources in our public places like libraries or partner with businesses to post those resources, um, like Walgreens or Dunkin' Donuts, especially 24-hour, uh, or, um, facilities. And let's start the conversation about homelessness prevention. Um, maybe partner with other cities as, you know, some of our neighboring cities are struggling with the same things. Are there grants that can help all of us combat the problem of addiction, joblessness, homelessness? Um, you know, and really, I just ask that you consider the root cause rather than just the panhandling or the result of some of the challenges. That was it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience who wants to speak, public participation? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. City Clerk, could you read number one on the agenda?
Item number one, Mr. President, is a public hearing offered by Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a lodging house license for Encore Boston Harbor at One Broadway.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, if, I don't know if there's a representative here, if not, if, uh, through our city clerk, we just get a little clarification of this before it goes to a public hearing?
Yep. I will tell you that, uh, it should be amended, just so you know, to say an in holder, 'cause that's our new license for hotels. Lodging houses are, are, are other, uh, types of properties. In holders are specifically hotel motel bed and breakfast. And it should be labeled as such, um, first. Secondly, this is so the Win Encore, um, Boston Harbor Hotel and Resort can operate a hotel. We have an in holder's license. They will be charged per room under our ordinances and will issue, they will be, um, issuing, uh, us a check yearly for $53,680. That will gen, that will go directly into the general fund funneled through the city clerk's office. We'll be issuing the permits. So this is to allow them to operate in, in holder's license, similar to the current in holder license that we have on Riviera Beach Parkway for the Envision Hotel. Um, they pay a lesser amount because they have much less rooms and they're, we, we divide it under 500 rooms at one fee, over 500 rooms, another fee. So that is pretty much, um, what we're doing. Everything is in order. All payments, um, are in order. All, uh, applications, sign offs have been done by building, fire, and Board of Health.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
I had a question regarding the breakdown of per rooms, but, uh, city clerk.
I have the, I have the, the numbers if you'd like.
If you could just.
Yep, so the, the license fee is $80 per room times 671 rooms, the Win, uh, the Encore Boston Harbor will hold. 671 times 80 comes out to $53,680.
Counselor Hanlon?
For you, Mr. Chairman, to our clerk, rented or not rented?
Rented or not rented, it's by capacity. It's a one, one-time annual fee.
Thank you. Thank you.
All in favor? I have, the ayes have it? Is it, is there anybody who's in favor on this petition? Anybody in favor for this petition? Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Is anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Motion closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Capone, on the piece?
I move that we, uh, suspend rule 77.
All in favor?
I think it's, I think it's changed, so whatever rule we have that corresponds to our old 77, which talks about a petition and not being present at a public hearing.
Counsel Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the clerk also says we have to amend this. So we have to amend it to say in holder license?
In holder instead of lodging.
Yeah.
So I would take the First Amendment first.
So the motion is to remove lodging?
Yeah, motion.
Yeah, so.
First, remove lodging.
If you don't vote on mine, you gotta shut everything down.
Yep.
So we need to vote on that one first.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend rule 77?
Whichever one corresponds.
Or whichever one correlates with the new, the new ordinance fee.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll go to changing it to.
Amended, the amendment.
Remove lodging house?
And change it to in holder.
In holder. All in favor?
Aye.
Second, all opposed? Counsel Capone?
On the piece, I would, uh, move that we lay this over on the table to our next meeting. Give the members an opportunity to read all of the provisions. And if there are any additional changes to be made, we can discuss it the next meeting.
Counsel Marchesi?
Just, uh, before you just want, on this piece here, now the in holder is only for a hotel or any kind of thing that's described in this piece.
So under our new ordinances, uh, that we just had redone, we, we split the word, everything was encompassed under lodging.
Yep.
But the state law makes a lodging house one type and an in holder different. An in holder is the bed and breakfast hotel motel. So we, we also split it similarly to the, um, to the state law.
So the in holder just entails?
The hotels, motels, or bed and breakfasts.
Okay. And bed and breakfast up to how many rooms?
It'd be under the, it'd be under the same statute.
Under the same statute, okay.
Correct.
I'll say, Counselor? Thank you.
So is the?
On the motion? Postpone to a mo, next meeting? Counselor DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the motion, I just don't see a need for postponement. I mean, the ordinance has been written and passed, um, that lets us know how much this type of establishment will pay per room. It's pretty black and white to me. I'm ready to vote in favor this evening.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Postponement, postponement, we'll take precedent.
Right. You have to vote on postponement.
Vote on postponing it to the next meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Do a roll call vote?
For postponement? Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
No.
Counselor DePiero?
No.
Counselor Hanlon? Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor Mc, um, McGlaughlin?
No.
Counselor Napolitano?
No.
Counselor Simonelli?
No.
And President Delasola?
No.
That would be three ayes, seven nays, uh, that is field.
Favorable action, Mr. Chairman? As amended?
On the motion, Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our clerk, did we just get this tonight?
It's a license, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, all the license.
So I just want to.
No, no, that's not, that's an ordinance.
Yeah, okay.
You got a, you got the license tonight.
Okay. So where, where is that?
The license is just like those general applications that we get. The license is, um, you know, the, the front page on, on the, the property owner signing off.
Okay.
And the, you know, you know.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean. I haven't seen it. So.
The license itself.
Right.
The application.
Right. So, I mean, we're talking about, and I'm sure everything is in order and I'm sure everything is fine, but we're voting on something, at least I personally haven't seen anything attached to it. I understand what it's for, I understand what the revenue is, but how, I don't know how I'm gonna, I'm not voting on anything I haven't seen yet. If my colleagues want to vote on something they haven't seen yet, that's fine. But I'll be voting no if it's pushed to a vote tonight.
Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I implore my colleague to vote whichever way he feels best, but seems fairly simple to me. 671 rooms times 80, uh, gives us 53,000. So I don't know what we have to wait on, but ready to move forward.
Counsel Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been here a long time. I've, I've, every time we vote on a license, I've, I've never seen that. It's never been put in front of us.
Normally, no. Normally, those are the one things I don't give.
I have never seen it in 12 years that I've been here. So this is nothing new. We have never requested it on any license that we have voted on. Up until now, we have never requested that form. So, I, I mean, it is very clear, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm the first one to say, if I didn't have something in front of me, I would not vote for it. But this is very clear, the clerk has said, he works for us, he has said, everything is in order. So I have to trust the clerk, like I trust him with every other license. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McGlaughlin?
I was just gonna echo the comments of Counselor, um, from Ward 5 to Florio, that, uh, this is, um, I won't repeat her comments, but pretty black and white, it's $80 per room, $671 amount just comes out to equal in 53,000. I don't see a reason for postponement on this at this time, um, but thank you.
Counsel Simonelli?
There's still an awful lot of information in here. Counsel Capone brings up a good point. If you wanted to prove through it, it's enormous.
But that's, that's not the, what's before you.
What's before me?
That's, that's an actual ordinance.
What's before me?
Is, is a license application. That's not what's in your hands.
Where is the license application? Where is it? No, where's the information that says that, 80 times 651?
That's, that's an ordinance that was drafted last year by this council. That's already been passed. What you're passing tonight is just the actual license itself.
Thank you.
Not an ordinance.
Counsel DePiero?
Call for the question, Mr. President.
Call for the question, favorable action?
On the motion, Mr. President?
Counsel Matusky?
Well, on the piece, I haven't spoken on it yet.
The question was called for.
Oh, okay. What's good for me is gonna be good for everybody now. You, you just broke the.
Well, when the, Counselor, when the, when the question's called for, it's.
Remember that, Mr. President.
It, it stops everything.
Remember that.
Okay. As, this is favorable action, um, as amended. Counsel Capone?
No.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counsel Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
Counselor Delasola?
Yes.
Uh, in ayes, one nay, you have, uh, granted the license to Encore Boston Harbor.
Clerk, can you read number two on the agenda?
Item number two, is a public hearing offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a garage license for Encore Boston Harbor at One Broadway.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
President, uh, city, seeing that the petitioner is in here, does the city clerk have any, uh, brief description of what this license entails and what the need for this license is?
Yes, it's a commercial, um, garage license. There, uh, they will be parking 2,928 vehicles below the Encore Boston Harbor Resort. At a license fee of $25, at a maximum fee of, uh, we, we can't charge more than 50,000 by our ordinance, uh, they would, they would actually pay 73, they're gonna pay $50,000 to the city of Everett for a license fee per year.
Mr. President, can I ask the city clerk a question, may or may not have an answer? Why would we capitalize our ordinance to be able to max out our false?
Because, um, in certain circumstances, courts have overruled our licensing fees, if they're not what we, what they would call reasonable. So.
But $25 a car is pretty reasonable if we're gonna park 2,900.
I agree. And we can always amend that in the, in the further, but the ordinance has already been set and we can, uh, amend it as we go. It's, it's new, so I, I, along with some of the counselors, we, we met in Legislative Affairs and discussed that a cap would be good, at least at the beginning, and then, and then we can see if we should lift the cap at some other point.
I just think where.
It's just a temporary thing.
Where cutting off $25,000 of potential new growth that we could get into the city that I'm sure could be utilized for something that is very meaningful.
I agree, but, uh, the way we look at it is, we've never seen this before anyway, and this is a first time license, so we were gonna receive $50,000 on an annual basis, so, um, for us.
I don't know if we should hold this over and look at the ordinance again? I mean, it's $25,000 that is, that is in play for the city that we could, we could max on. I'm gonna yield the floor to my colleagues and I just ask that I, that I get called on before the Republicans take.
Thank you. Counsel Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have this license already in front of us and we already have an ordinance in place.
That we're just granting the license tonight.
We can't, right. So it would be impossible for us to change it right now.
Yeah, but you can, after this meeting, we address it.
I mean, we can change it. We can change it next year, we can address it.
Yeah, 100%.
But right now, where they're coming for the license the first time and we already have an ordinance in place, I don't see how we could change this that's in front of us right now. In the future, maybe, but not now.
Thank you. Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to, to our city clerk. So the, the license as it's presented to you is 2928 for parking spots?
That's the number of vehicles that they gave me the license, uh, and that was approved and signed off.
Do we know if that's the full amount of spots that they have, or is it, is there anything else reserved?
That's what's under, that's what the garage.
Just underneath.
Correct. We licensed the garage.
And that's what this license for is, for the garage itself?
It's just so that, uh, our fire and our ISD department will go in and inspect on an annual basis, uh, to make sure that they're in compliance, all fire codes are, um, are met and so on. So that's what this license fee is.
All right, thank you. Uh, before we go any further, I, I think we suspended the, the rule.
Yes.
Um, that was corresponding with our old 77, just on piece number one, whether we're all the same petitioner, I'd make the motion that we suspend it for the evening. Whatever rule.
Second motion.
Suspend 77.
Or the corresponding number.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Counsel McGlaughlin?
Just last question, this, uh, city clerk, is this an annual fee that the resort will pay to be able to?
Yes, all our licenses are generally annual fees.
So are they going to be grandfathered in at this rate?
No.
That we, so if we were to change this ordinance within the current year?
We don't, we don't, the grandfather law does not work on licensing fees.
Okay, so if we change the ordinance in the, over the coming year, then the new, the new rate would apply?
Correct. It would be grandfathered in for the year. We couldn't mid-year charge them more. But next year, we could charge them again.
Okay, that's, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Public hearing? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it? I'll ask three times, anybody in favor of this piece? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That part's closed, I'll ask anybody opposed? Is anybody opposed? Anybody opposed to this piece? This piece is closed? Favorable action? Seconded? All in favor? A roll call vote, sorry.
Okay. Favorable action for the garage license. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchesi?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
Counsel Delasola?
Yes.
Uh, President Delasola, I'm sorry. Ten ayes, zero nays, Mr. President, you have, um, granted the petition.
Clerk, can you read number three on the agenda, please?
Item number three, is a public hearing offered by Counsel Rich, Counselor Richard J. Delasola as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a taxi stand license for Encore Boston Harbor at One Broadway.
Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, through you to our clerk, do we, do we know where exactly the taxi stand is gonna be?
That's, that's the only thing, they, they weren't 100% sure. So really, we grant these mostly, um, they're granted on city property. They wanted to create an area both for Uber, which we don't regulate stands for, and one for their taxi. Their belief and where they think they're gonna do it is along the side and it will be on the public way, but, um, we don't have a final exact spot. We, they, we use One Broadway, but I think they're going to do it technically on One Broadway, but setback.
Sure.
Um, so this one, um, would be my recommendation, because we're not 100% aware, I'd hold a public hearing. And this one I would actually postpone because we're not 100% on, um, where it's gonna be. And it's not a necessity that they need it tonight.
Right.
So, to wait two weeks would not be an issue.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, uh, I'll yield the floor to my colleagues, we'll have the public hearing, I'll make that motion after the fact.
Thank you. Counsel McGlaughlin?
I actually had a question that Counsel DePiero answered, which was that we have, uh, one of the finest business owners in the city, uh, in the audience, and which is Les Marwood from Mob and Ever Taxi, and I didn't know if he had any input to this piece, seeing that he is our cab owner, but Counsel DePiero answered my question, so I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Any more questions?
Second motion?
Public hearing is open, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? I'll ask three times, anybody in favor of this? Is anybody in favor of this petition? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? That part is closed. Anybody opposed to this? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? Closed hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd move that we postpone this to our next meeting, give the Encore folks an opportunity to present the city, city clerk, with an identification of where it's going to be.
Do I have a second on that? All seconded? Roll call vote?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President?
Counselor Capone?
Could we suspend the rules inclusive of the corresponding rule with Rule 20 for appointments and take items nine through fifteen collectively?
Is that seconded? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. That was nine to fifteen? Clerk, can you read those items, please?
Yes. Item number nine, is an appointment offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Richard Connors as the inspector of wires for three years expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Item number ten is an appointment offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola as president that the Everett City Council hereby appoint Frank Nuzzo as code enforcement director for a term of three years expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Item eleven is an appointment offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola as president that the Everett City Council hereby appoints Adale Bertie as the weights and measures director for a term of three years expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Item twelve, that the Everett City Council hereby appoints Michael Desmond as the building inspector for a three-year term expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Item thirteen, that the Everett City Council hereby appoints John O'Keefe as the inspector of plumbing for a three-year term expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Item number fourteen, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the appointment of Lara Webby Amori as the director of human resources for a term of three years expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. And lastly, item number fifteen, that the Everett City Council approve the appointment of Bishop Robert G. Brown as the chaplain for the Everett Fire Department for a term of three years expiring January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, on the motion, I just have a question, that I don't recall ever at a time that some of these appointments have become before us, and I'm just wondering if something has changed or why some of these are before us this evening, because I don't recall the last time we voted on them, what the term was, when their term ended, and is it a renewal of their existing term?
Clerk, answer that question.
I can answer that. So I don't know if you know, I'm doing a review along with the mayor's administration over a lot of the appointments. Some of them are expired, so we're filling them in. Some are new, are a human resources director, though she has served our community for nearly a decade. She's in a new role as human resources director, so we have to swear her in to that new role. We did have a retirement in the plumbing inspector, and our new plumbing inspector is here. The other ones are reappointments. Obviously, Mr. Nuzzo served for a long time as code enforcement. Mr. Adale Bertie, the same thing. Mr. Desmond also. And Bishop Robert G. Brown has been the chaplain. He has gone without an appointment for a little while, so we were just catching up on him.
Mr. Clerk, the appointments of Mr. Nuzzo and Mr. Desmond, have they been appointed previously?
Oh, yes, many times.
When was the last time when they were appointed?
Three years ago.
I can't remember off the top of my head, but twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen. So they're a little bit out, some of them were a few months out of date, but most of them are pretty much up, and they were working off temporary appointments through the administration, which is allowed under our ordinances in our administrative code.
I'll say, Counselor? Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Unless there's an objection from any of the members, I'm assuming these are probably going to be voted favorably unanimously. I would say we suspend the rules. We have one vote be cast, and that our clerk record it accordingly for each individual.
Please bear with me one moment.
Yep. Second motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, all opposed? The ayes have it. We'll do a roll call vote.
This, just so everyone knows, is nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen for the reappointments of five and the new appointments of two. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor de Florio? Counselor De Perro?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese?
Yes.
Counselor Matuski?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli? And President Delasola?
Yes.
Ten yays, zero nays, Mr. President, you have passed the orders. I do ask that if the ISD department would come up collectively, and I will swear you in together, and then I'll take Ms. Amori right after.
We swear on these guys.
Everybody remember, you know, after I say aye, you say your name, follow me along. I'll go slow, and it's three times, all right? So raise your right hand, please. Are we ready? Repeat after me. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as according to the best of my abilities and understanding agreeably to the rules regulations laws ordinances and charter of the city of Everett so help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and I'll support the laws and constitution of the Commonwealth so help me God. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and I'll support the constitution of the United States so help me God. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I would now ask our human resources director, please come before us. Otherwise, they won't hear us. You stand right here. Are we ready? I'll have you raise your right hand. You'll do the same. Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Lara Amori.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I'll faithfully and impartially
that I'll faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
discharge and perform
all the duties incumbent upon me
all the duties incumbent upon me
as the director of human resources
as the director of human resources
for the city of Everett
for the city of Everett
according to the best of my abilities
according to the best of my abilities
and understanding
and understand
agreeably to the rules
agreeably to the rules
regulations
regulations
laws ordinances and charter
ordinances and charter
of the city of Everett
of the city of Everett
so help me God
so help me God
aye.
Aye. Lara Webby Amori
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I'll bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and I'll support the laws
and I'll support the laws
and constitution
and constitution
of the Commonwealth
of the Commonwealth
so help me God
so help me God
aye.
Aye, Lara Webby Amori
Do solemnly swear that I'll bear true faith and allegiance
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the United States of America
to the United States of America
and I'll support the constitution
and I'll support the constitution
of the United States
of the United States
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me. I would like to tell you, there is one more petition on here for Encore Boston Harbor, though it did not need a public hearing. It's number eighteen, if you would like to take that out, so that way we could close out Encore at once.
Second on that? All seconded, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, can you read number eighteen on the agenda?
Item number eighteen is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council hereby approves a livery license for Encore Boston Harbor at One Broadway.
Counselor Perio.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question's for the clerk, because I'm sure he could probably answer it. This livery license, are they just looking to have particular high-end clients, let's say?
Correct.
I don't want to see them affect any local taxi businesses or so forth.
They're only going to have, if I'm not mistaken, it was three or four vehicles. It's mostly to pick up their corporate people and some of the higher-end clients. Originally, we weren't going to do a license, because they were only going to do their own people, which they're already covered under insurance, but they did say that on occasion they would. There is, they already have contracts with outside vendors for livery, so they're not going to affect local livery companies, because they have contracts with them. This is solely for most of their top echelon of employees and a few clients when they need to. A few of the clients that fly in. Other than that, that's what they explained to me, and that's what the license will allow them to do.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'd move for favorable action.
Second motion. Before I, I got Counselor McGlaughlin?
To Counselor De Perro's point, which is very well taken. Can we number the number of vehicles that can be licensed under this livery license? Can we say only four or six cars or something?
Yep, so they're requesting, they were doing four, they're requesting six vehicles. That is what they're maxing out in. So that is what their license will say. It's six vehicles times fifty dollars per license, so yeah, six vehicles.
Money-wise, but they cannot have more than six vehicles. They'll have to have four.
Yeah, so just so you know, anytime we change, and this is something that I've discussed with Counselor Capone, anytime there is either fines or fees that they have not paid, or if they look to change their license in the positive, so if they look to gain something, they have to come back before this board, and it's my responsibility to automatically issue it to you, so that happens. So I don't have the authority to just issue those.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Counselor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our order doesn't say six vehicles, so I'd like to amend it to say six vehicles, because that's what I'm voting on.
But just so you know, we don't write it that way, because same thing, we don't write when Flambos Registration, they want sixty million gallons. You can add it, but it's in the license, and that's my responsibility is to tell you what it is, so that's what you, so you know what you're voting on. So it doesn't have to be in the order.
It doesn't have to be in the order, but it's okay if it's in the license.
It's a condition of the license. That's how we do it.
I'm okay with that.
And I did have something else to mention to you, but I'll try to remember it. It wasn't the end point, sorry.
Any more questions? Seconded, all in favor? That's a roll call vote, I'm sorry, you can... Roll call vote.
This is to approve a livery license with six vehicles. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor de Florio?
Yes.
Counselor De Perro?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Marchese? Counselor Matuski? Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
It's nine yays, zero nays.
Clerk, can you go back to number four, please? On the agenda.
Item number four is an ordinance offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president to amend Chapter Twelve of the revised ordinances to add short-term rentals.
Refer to the committee on Legislative Affairs.
I got Counselor de Florio?
I was just gonna recommend if we could postpone it, because we just received this tonight.
Oh, yeah, no, I have no expectation of this passing this evening. Just so you know, you do have the assistant city solicitor, actually, two assistant city solicitors here, and they can explain anything, but if you choose to send it to committee, which I would recommend, they will be there to discuss it, because they crafted this along with me, but mostly them.
Yeah, there's a lot to absorb, so I'm ready to... Whatever the board would prefer, if we send it to committee, I'll postpone it. It's okay with me.
Counselor Hanlon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our clerk. We already, in this ordinance, we already have a short-term rental in here.
No, that's the new ordinance. So what we did is...
Is that included in here?
In the original ordinance, we have, you know, a lodging license, right? So inside the lodging license, we added sections twelve dash forty-five on, and that is the short-term rental. And then inside twelve dash forty-eighty through forty-eighty-four, which was the original ordinance, that's where we added some definitions and so on and so forth to correlate with the short-term rentals. So that way, it's one evenly crafted piece.
Thank you.
I have one more, one more, Counselor, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our clerk. Has this already been viewed by the Solicitor's Office?
It was drafted by the two assistant city solicitors, and the calling has read.
Thank you. So my, the motion I would make, rather than putting it into a committee where there's only gonna be four members, it's already gone through the city Solicitor's Office. What I would recommend is we postpone it to our next meeting, give the members an opportunity to read it, and then at the next meeting, if there's any questions, we could have a representative from the Solicitor come forward. Because otherwise, it's already, it's already been reviewed by them. So if we put it in the committee, there's only four members, it's gonna come back out, everyone's gonna have questions. So I would just skip that route. If it was a brand-new piece that needed to be worked on, that's where I would recommend the committee, but I would recommend we postpone it and give the members an opportunity to read it. At our next meeting, if there's any questions, we could bring the Solicitor's Office on.
I'll withdraw my motion, second Counselor Capone's.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
I, before you go forward, there is a, I see a gentleman in the audience for an awning. If we could take that piece up, which I believe it's item number nineteen.
Second.
Read number nineteen.
Item number nineteen is a petition offered by Counselor Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council approve the replacement of an existing awning for Super JC Market at sixty-seven Ferry, excuse me, Chelsea Street. Counselor Capone? Sorry.
Is the petitioner in the audience? Please have the petitioner come on. If you want to come forward, please.
What color is it? Can't be.
Just state your name, please. It is.
So I'm looking at...
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm looking at some photos. Right now, there's nothing up there, correct?
There isn't. There was, but it was removed to make some repairs on the wall.
Okay, and the new one that you're putting up, I can't tell, is it green?
It is green.
With yellow letters?
Yes, it's green.
And what was the prior one that was up there? Do you remember?
It was just one whole unit. It was a quarter-barrel design.
Okay, what color is it?
I believe it was yellow.
Yellow, okay. I don't have any questions. I'm gonna pass the pictures around to my colleagues, and thank you.
Counselor Marchese?
I believe we have a, we have an ordinance that was passed this year of the colors that we put up. There's only two colors. That's either black, or it's the red, and whatever colors they want to add to it. So I think that would be informative to the owner. It is an ordinance now, so... So whoever wants to put anything up, you have to follow the ordinance, that's all. the ordinance, that's all. You have a black or red, and you can design your colors wherever you want on that existing awning.
He's looking up right now.
I know, Counsel Marquezzi, what I was looking was if there was a clause that allows us- Sorry, Counsel Marquezzi is correct. I'm just looking to see if there was a clause that allows you to do something different. I was just looking it for you. I have the ordinance before me. It does say awning covering colors unless otherwise approved by the City Council. All such awning covers shall be of a solid-through color. All such awning coverings shall be crimson-red or black in color, and all such awning coverings located on the same building must be the same color. But we did do the cover-all on the top, under Item B, that says unless otherwise approved by the City Council, which gives you the authority to not follow this exactly with that color. You can grant the petition differently. So I was looking for that language, and it does exist.
Counsel Marquezzi, you still got the floor, if you want to ask a question?
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that we did pass that ordinance to get some kind of uniformity in the city of Everett, so.
And, and it does say that you, so if you granted green, if it's the same building, you will probably want to keep it that same color, green is what you would at least do. That way, there's some uniformity in the buildings. That's what your ordinance states.
Well, what, the uniformity is supposed to be a color that's uniform with the city of Everett. Well, you guys can do what you want. You can put it pink if you want, but I mean, it's an ordinance, and I will vote against anything but the color that's supposed to be in the ordinance. Not that I care, but that's an ordinance.
Counsel Florio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Are there any other awnings in this area? Or is that the only one on the building?
That would be the only one in the building.
Okay. Is there a problem if you go with a crimson-red, which is like a red, or a dark red, or a black?
The only thing is that this is a Brazilian supermarket, so it's sticking with that Brazilian flag colors to attract more of his clients.
Right. Well, you can always write something in the writing. We're trying to make the city all one color, because unfortunately, you know, especially if you go like Broadway, one's a bright yellow, one's green, one's red, one's orange. So this is the reason why we did this, to try to make the city more uniform. So we would appreciate it if you could change your color either to a red or a black, because I am going to vote against the green tonight.
Okay.
All right, I'm sorry, thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Hanlon?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, that, and I don't have to say it now, but I will anyway, that, you know, if we allow the council to change it when we feel like changing it, then anyone that comes in with an orange, green, blue, white, whatever it is, will say, well, you did it for them, why can't you do it for me? That's why I don't think we should do that. We should stay with the black and white, or the red, or whatever. Thank you.
Counsel Matuski?
Over the last couple of years, we've granted some awning licenses. I think the Polo Chicken Place on-
Many.
That is not black. It's red. But it's a, it's not crimson-red. But, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. This is forest green, that's pretty close to black. You know, and I've discussed this, as long as it's not a fluorescent color that's obnoxious, I mean, is this going to be made out of canvas, sir?
Yes, some brother.
So it's not that cheap plastic stuff that you see?
No, no, I know.
That rips, and nobody fixes it.
Yeah.
It looks terrible.
Some brother.
And it's a canvas product, Mr. President, you know, and I, I've only been in the store a few times. It's a just store, isn't it? Are you the awning man?
No, I'm the awning guy.
The other gentleman, he's right there, yeah. But I know it's a busy location. I mean, you know, the only other place you can shop at is McKinnon's, which is very good anyway, but, and Stop &amp; Shop, but this store is really picked up. And, you know, I want to wish you the best of luck, but that looks pretty nice to me. You know, and as I said, you painted the outside of the building already? It looks like you're in the-
Not yet.
You did the cement work, and now you're doing that? If you look at the picture, the painting of the trim is the color of the awning. So they're not just randomly putting up a different color here, you know what I'm saying? It's going to match the trim. They're painting that fancy cement work on the top of it. But I think the forest green looks nice. But, you know, as I said, we have granted permits to other people, and I like the canvas look. The canvas look is really what should be in, and we should outlaw the plastic ones. But I'm going to vote in favor of it, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. Thank you for explaining why you wanted to do the green and the yellow. Some of my colleagues had talked about the different color schemes. I personally don't care for this ordinance, because I think, I understand we're trying to find uniformity, but we're a diverse community. I'm not worried about uniformity. So if a businessman or woman wants to put up a awning that reflects their business and is line of their business, I think you should be able to spend your money to do that, as long as it's not causing a nuisance for the community. So I know that it's been suggested different colors. Before I vote on it one way or the other, I want to know what your feelings are. Are you okay with black and white or maroon if it need be? Or would you prefer to have your green and your yellow, because that represents your Brazilian market?
Well, the owner is here, and he actually-
Yeah.
Yes, I'm Jose Quillo.
Okay.
On a Super JC Market, 67 Chelsea Street. Yeah, those colors is like-
The guest is speaking.
The color is my primary colors from 18 years, you know, so I have the store open there, so I never changed the color. So now, this interior is different color, but outside is going to be, I mean, I like to keep the same color, you know, forest green with a yellow lettering.
Okay. So that's consistent inside and outside?
Yeah, and, you know, the walls outside is going to be, you know, different color, probably be coral color, you know? So I did not decide what color I'm going to put on the wall. But I'm going to keep the trim on the top, the building the same, you know, it's painted white, the same, the ways it is right now. So, you know, but we probably have option to put a black awning.
Okay.
Okay? So that's the only color. But I prefer to keep on the forest green.
Okay. And I don't think that that looks bad. There's nothing wrong with that. I think it's a, it's a very attractive awning, and if that is going to tie in with the interior of your building, and it's going to tie into your business, then I think you, as a business owner, should have that opportunity. So, all right, thank you, I appreciate your input.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I was going to echo the comments of Counsel Capone. I personally know the business owner. We do several community events. Joe is a guy that you can always go to and depend on. He's a local guy, and like Counsel Matuski said, if an awning rips or something, you want somebody local that you can go to, and he's always in the city, he's always around. The awning actually looks pretty decent, and if that's been his colors for 18 years, then we shouldn't ask him to change his tone and what he's been doing for 18 years. He's been successful for 18 years. We should support a local business owner like himself who supports us and gives back to the community. My colleague from Ward 1, some of my other colleagues that represent Ward 1, they don't seem to have an issue with it. If they are pleased with it, I respect their thoughts and would support it fully. Thank you.
Counsel Simonelli?
Mr. Chairman, through Counselman Simonelli. And the former councilmen that just spoke are in favor for the color of the awnings and the goodness of the individual business practices in the city of Everett. It's all well and good. All Counselman Marquez was trying to point out is that even though we have it written in our ordinance that you can change it to whatever color you want, we had decided as a body collectively to make it black or red. Probably won't be opposed to it, but we're not following our own rules and regulations that we just made last season. We changed it because we didn't want it to get yellow, and purple, and white. And even though this gentleman's business has improved in our community a thousand percent, the colors are beautiful. It's not what we have written down in our own ordinance. But we can do whatever we want. Just be aware, Counsel Marquez is saying that we changed it intentionally so that we didn't bump it to tonight green, tomorrow yellow, and the next day pink. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Napolitano?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do want to remind our colleagues the reason why that provision was put into the, into the ordinance. The reason why there was provision made to be able to give some flexibility was because companies spend tens of thousands of dollars creating a brand, okay? And this is what this gentleman is doing. He's spent 18 years creating a brand for his business, and we're going to turn around and tell him we have to change his brand. Now, this is one of the situations that the exception falls under. You know, the perception that businesses make money hand over fist is crap. That's not true. It costs a lot of money to maintain a business, a lot of energy. When I had my business, we used to say it takes a lot of work to make it look easy. But it takes a lot of work. You know, the gentleman has been a, has been a cornerstone in that, on Chelsea Street for 18 years. There's never been any complaints, never been any problems with the business. All he's looking to do is put a banner back up the way it was originally presented, and I don't think that's unreasonable. For that reason alone, we shouldn't get all bogged down on whether it should be red or green, okay? This isn't a new business. I respect, you know, coming in with a new business, trying to address this, and trying to maintain some uniformity. But this is not, this is not a new business. We're asking him now to change his look, and I don't think that's right. I really don't. I think that provision was set up so businesses that come in that have, that have an established brand have the flexibility to be able to display that brand. In that respect, we recommend the colors based on new businesses coming in, so they don't go crazy and put something out there that's ludicrous. That doesn't apply, in my opinion, in this situation, and I will be voting to support this. I've watched that business develop and grow over the years, and I think that in fairness, to a business owner that has created service for the city, that we should not be impeding his business by telling him, you got to do something else. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Florio?
I was going to say, excuse the customary thanks if there are no further questions. Excuse.
Call for the question. Excuse the customary thanks. Just excusing the guest.
We got to excuse the guest.
Yes, we just did.
The motion was for favorable action.
And there is no motion, number one, so you can't call for the question. No, well, before you make the mo-
Let them-
There was no motion, so you can't call for a question if there's no motion. I just want to make it very clear that I don't think we should pick and, we have ordinances on the books that we never follow, okay? So get the, get the ordinance and just rip them out. We either follow the ordinance or we don't. I have nothing against this dark green. I think it's great, it looks beautiful, especially with the trim that he's doing. The point is, we sit here and we pick and choose on what business we want to give what to. Okay?
Excuse me, we called, we called for the, we called for the question. Fable action on the piece. Was it second? It was seconded. Yes. Call for the question. Yes.
I didn't hear a second, though.
The seconded.
On, on the motion?
You can't, if it's-
Well, I can, because there was no second.
There was a second.
There was no second. There was a motion.
The motion was?
There was a motion that was never seconded. So until the motion is seconded, you can't-
Counsel Hanlon seconded.
I just heard a second now. I, I'm not going to doubt the chair, we won't do that to you this early in your term.
Thank you.
But the reality is, if you make a motion and nobody seconds it, it's still a live, it's a live caption. So we'll let it go, we'll let the councils vote how they want to vote, and we'll go from there.
For favorable action as presented by the petitioners. Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero?
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon?
No.
Counsel Marquez, Counsel Marquez, Counsel Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
No.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
Seven yeas, two nays, you have passed. You will come to my office Wednesday after 12, and I'll issue you the permit. Okay? Thank you.
Ayes have it? Please read. Thirty-one and thirty-two on the agenda, please.
Item thirty-one. Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as president from 2018, that Dan Cameron from the National Grid appear at the last meeting of December 2018 to provide an update on the streetlight replacements discussed in committee this fall, as well as progress on the issue of double polls. Item thirty-two, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne A. Matuski that a representative from National Grid appear at the next council meeting to discuss excessive robocalls from National Grid to Everett residents.
Counsel Napolitano, before we get, before we get started here, mayor from the chair, we have the five-minute rule, which is on our chart, it's the five minutes of you speaking, not you and the guest. So I make that clear.
And the irony of you pointing that out while I'm getting ready to speak doesn't escape me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A little pressure on you. Gary, Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Cameron. How are you doing this evening?
Very good, thanks.
Okay. I know you and I had spoke two weeks ago. You know, at that time, we've identified there were roughly 12 lights on Ferry Street that were out, seven lights on Main Street. I do know the crews were out repairing lights. You've cut down the amount of lights down considerably. Can you give us an update about the remaining lights that weren't addressed? I know you mentioned priorly that there was some underground work that had to be completed. Does that apply to the remaining lights?
Sure, they're-
Push it out for Green.
So following the, the meeting on the 26th, we did do another audit, and specifically on Ferry Street, we found that there were 12 lights out. Eleven of those 12 have been, have been repaired. There is one down near Cottage Street that's still out, and-
Two.
Okay. I went by tonight, I only saw one, but, okay. But there are three others, and, you know, this is, it's a dynamic thing, I think these three weren't there previously, so they will be, they will be addressed as well. We did have some significant issues on two of the lights. In fact, you'll see some of the sidewalk, we had to put some conduit in on the pole at the corner of Elm Street and Ferry Street, near the park. That was a considerable amount of work to get that light going again. So that's, that's the challenge we have occasionally with, with underground lights. A number of them had underground wiring problems, so it wasn't just a case of just fixing the, you know, the light itself or the photocell. Regarding Main Street, we have got, I think we're down to three on Main Street that need to be fixed, and we know two of them have significant underground issues as well. We'll be moving the crews over there to get, to get those repaired. And I, on Broadway, I think we're down to one light.
Broadway, right. I mean, when we, when we, when we had spoke, my wife and I had actually gone around and took a count. Broadway was actually in great condition. Chelsea Street and Elm Street were in better condition than we thought. The main, the main issues were Main Street and it, seven lights on Main Street, such where a few of them grouped together. You know, that, that does create a problem, and that was the issue with Ferry Street. Ferry Street from the Malden Line to Glendale Square was almost pristine. There was only one light out at Glendale Towers that needed to be addressed. The other eleven lights were all solved between Glendale Square and Chelsea Street, and that's, that's a significant percentage of the total number of lights down there. You know, we're starting to, since we started talking about this, and the local papers have caused some, some, put some spotlight on this as well, you know, we're starting, starting to get calls for other streets in neighborhoods. When we call in with a, with an address and a, and a pole number, how long a turnaround time can we expect before a crew can get out there and actually replace it? What, what's the, how's, what's the actual process? Is it proactive? Is it reactive?
Most of the time, is, is actually getting the order processed, because once it hits, because when people call in, they're calling our call center, and that representative takes that call and then creates a, a light order, all right? And then the light order goes to engineering for someone to actually, you know, put together a work request. Most of the lights are fed off the overhead system, you know, so they're, the wires are all visible, and they're pretty easy to fix. Usually, if it's an overhead problem, the worst case you'd have is the feed to the light or the light itself. Underground's much different, like I described previously. So once it hits the Malden Platform, you know, where the, where line trucks are stationed to fix the lights, usually takes a couple of days, but the total process, it's about a week to ten days.
From the point where it's reported?
Correct.
To the point where we can see some work?
Right.
Okay. Well, I, I, I am starting to now track lights in, in the, in the, in the neighborhoods that I'm getting calls on, so I will be submitting some, so I'll be kinda watching to see how that timeframe actually works. And if you'd like, I can submit it through yourself, if you, or you'd rather I go through the call center, but...
You can, you can always submit them to me. I don't have a problem with that. Sometimes that, it works faster if you, I don't want the, the entire city coming, but if, if people go to you and wanna feed it to me, that's fine.
Okay. I mean, right now, my main concern is multiples, where we have, where we have, where we have more than one light in a row out.
Sure.
Because that's not just creating a dark spot in front of that area where there should be lit. With two out, it creates a, a, an area.
Sure.
And that's, that's, that's what we don't wanna see happen. You know, we're a safe city, you know, there are some concerns in some of the neighborhoods, but the last thing we want in a city like Everett is that people be afraid to go out in the neighborhoods because they're afraid that it's too dark, or they can't see what's going on. Well, thank you. Again, I appreciate, appreciate the work that's been done. When my, my wife texted me at work the day they're working on Ferry Street saying, "Something must be up because I see all these trucks," I says, "Yes, so Mr. Ma... Mr. Cameron and I spoke the night before." So it is appreciated, but I, I will be sending some more lists of, of some of the neighborhood lights, 'cause again, the main streets make the city overall look poor when the lights are out. Even when they're well-lit, if the neighborhoods are dark, then again, it just, people go where there's, where they can get away with stuff, and that's why we're trying to keep the light on full.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too noticed a big improvement on Ferry Street. And, you know, you can understand, there's a little passion here every now and then in this game, but, you know, as a matter of fact, I was at Stop &amp; Shop just two days ago, and if you can write this address now, fifty-nine Oliver Street. The light just went out a week ago, so it hasn't been a long time, but, you know, people actually approaching me now, and, and their lights out, but I wanna thank you. It's, I think it's the first week I haven't got a call from National Grid saying my electric bill was paid or wasn't paid, or energy savings or whatever. And thank you for letting us know that it's not actually your company, it's desolicitation. And, you know, and the biggest thing that I have is that we have a lot of senior citizens in Everett, and just for them to answer the phone is a little bit of a chore. I won't say it's, you know, it's not a big deal, but, you know, when you get these nuisance phone calls, and it's happening quite a bit, but I wanna thank you for that. And the other question I have, Mr. Cameron, is the strike over now? Am I...
Yes, it is, and the, glad to report that all the men in warm are back to work as of the last Monday, we could go today.
Oh, that's good news. And that was quite a while. Over a year, was it?
About six months.
Six months, yeah. Well, that's great. I feel a lot safer having qualified gas workers, off-telephone work, I mean, light pole workers that actually know what they're doing, and I'm so happy that's all. So we've really made some headway here.
Yeah.
And I really wanna thank you. I know I seemed a little passionate a couple of weeks ago, but you understand that we do get complaints, and the councilman, his neighborhood was pitch black.
Yeah.
And, you know, and when lights are out in that extensive stretch of Ferry Street, for instance, there's a tendency that crime could happen, you know, and people are afraid to walk at night. But I wanna thank you, Mr. Cameron, and I hope that, you know, my last time around with you here, you know, we, we had five issues with you, the double poles, which is being solved as we speak. We had the lights out, now you're working on that, and that's good. And the strike is over, that's great. And the robocalls have calmed down. Maybe your company finally let these other companies know, maybe? Did you mention it to your...
We did, and, and I, I will say, a customer can always call our customer service and have their account blocked, all right? So there will be no...
How you do that? I'd like to have mine blocked.
Yeah. To call, call a, it's a one-eight-hundred-three-two-two.
Three-two-two.
Three-two-two-three.
Three-two, gee, that... Know somebody in the phone company? Three-two-two-three?
Yeah.
So that will block you from any of these solicitations?
That's correct. Yep. It's called a supplier block.
Good. I might take a small ad out and put that in the local paper, but it seems like they've stopped. But I wanna thank you, Mr. Cameron. I've, I've dealt with you over the last thirty-seven years, and you're a respectable guy, and I appreciate the good work that we try to get done here in Everett. Thank you.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Cameron, I didn't say anything to you the last time that you were here, and, and because I don't believe in you. For years, and years, I've been asking you to fix three lights on Main Street. Haven't been done. The last time you were here, you said, "Well, maybe you should get the pole numbers." I was sort of insulted by that. I've been in, in politics in this city for fifty years, and for someone to say to me, "Well, give us the pole number in front of your house," I would think you would just say, "Go find the councilman's house in Everett that's been there for fifty years and fix his lights." That's what I was expecting you to say. This is the first time I've heard something that there's a call center. I never knew there was a call center, that we're supposed to call the call center. So that means that, I think, you never called the call center for us when we asked you to fix a pole, a light on, on a, on a particular pole in front of a particular address or something. They never found out because they never came out. In all this time, they have never come out. They replaced a pole. I don't think it was because of my request, but I think it was just something that was on their, their menu, but there were still two lights in that area that had been out for years, and nothing had been done about them.
Where were you talking on Main Street?
In front of my house.
In what, could be a side street?
In front of the bank.
On Main Street?
Winthrop Street.
Corner of Winthrop and Main.
One-seventy-one, one-seventy-three. I think the bank is in the one-eighty-ones or something like that.
All right. It was, um, I know when we did, I rode that street myself about two or three weeks before the holidays, and there were only two lights out on the whole stretch from the circle all the way to...
You said there weren't two lights out?
There were two lights, but they weren't in that area.
Well, you know, you might mistake the one in, in front of the bank because they have, because I know there's electricity in the pole.
Okay.
Because they have a work light going into their, their parking lot.
Okay.
You know, so you may say, "Well, that light's working," but it isn't.
No.
The street light is not working.
If I could just clarify one thing, you know, for residents of the city, you know, the, the way that they should report a street light out is to call the eight-hundred number, the customer service number, and it does help if they do have the pole number, 'cause that's how our database works. 'Cause a lot of times, we try to fix lights actually during the day, and so if the trouble person has the pole number, they know exactly which light. In front of a particular address does help, but the pole number is really, 'cause that's how the order is created. But I know many of you come directly to me with lights out, and that's fine, too. It's a little bit different process for me. I don't have to go through the call center. You know, I, I can, I can shortcut that. That's all.
Well, it's just strange that all this time that we haven't, we haven't got these things, these things fixed, that's all. I missed that number. I got the one-eight-hundred-eight-two-two.
It's one-eight-hundred.
What, what next?
Three-two-two.
Yeah, oh, three-two-two, yeah.
Three-two-two-three.
Yeah. Three-two-two-two, yeah. Three-two-two-six. Three. Six. Three. Three. Three-two-two-six?
Three-two-two-three. Maybe that's why they haven't fixed them.
Yeah, maybe. Well, I never got these numbers. Three-two-two-three, I got that. I got that. Thank you for the telephone number.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just wanted to thank, actually, thank Dan Cameron. Dan Cameron and I have worked closely. We, I have the Gateway Mall, and I've had different power outages down at the Gateway Mall. Counselor Cohen and I had got some phone calls, and Dan's always a phone call away. And I just wanna thank you, Dan, for, for helping out not the casino, the Gateway Center, so much other that happens in Ward Six, and that you're always there to, to get an answer or to help a business owner out. It's greatly appreciated by my, my residents and my business owners in my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guest. I was gonna ask you to say the number again, just to make sure everyone had it, and it's one-eight-hundred-three-two-two-three-two-two-three. That's correct.
And, and there's a second number if you'd like it, too.
No, let's stick with one.
That's confusing.
One is good enough. And I'm glad my colleagues are getting the calls. I'm getting them all. I, I got five today and two of them this evening when I was in the back room waiting for our six o'clock meeting. But I just wanted to point out that I usually call in the call center. They're usually pretty good about it. The turnaround time's between seven to ten days. Sometimes you have to call back a second time and remind them, but as long as you give them the pole number, I think that the purpose, as you stated, is just to make sure they can identify exactly where they're going. Because it is, it is a little tricky, and I understand your frustration, but when you give them a pole number, they know exactly where to go. It speeds the process up, which gets the light fixed quicker, so that's good. But the turnaround time is usually seven to ten days. As I said, I put six in this morning, so I'll be following up on that in ten days. But hopefully, we'll be good. So thank you very much. I'm glad you provided the phone number, and I have no other questions.
There's no more questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Politan.
Refer back to sponsor.
Okay, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, the ayes have it on thirty-one and thirty-two, correct? All in favor? All the polls, the ayes have it on twenty-five. Clerk, can you read number twenty-five on the agenda?
Item number twenty-five, Mr. President, is out. One, it's offered by Counselor Michael K. Marquezey, that in addition to the nuisance panhandling law, be added as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to beg or solicit money or aid in his own behalf in any place of business, house, or upon any of the streets of Everett.
The committee report on that?
Yep. Would you like me to read that first, Counselor? So we, we discussed this. We had our solicitor, Mahia, come before us in the committee. The committee considered ordinance. Myself and Solicitor Mahia were there. The clerk of committees provided the members with a copy of ordinance thirteen dash fifteen, aggressive solicitation, and seventeen dash twelve, selling of articles or goods in public ways, which are already on our books, that address some of the concerns listed in the proposal. Counselor DeFlorio expressed concern over the impact it would have on organizations like Girl Scouts or Puff Warner. Ms. Mahia informed the committee that panhandling was considered a protected speech by the Supreme Court. She questioned how something like this could even be enforced if it could be made into law. Mr. Cornelio reiterated that some of the existing ordinances mentioned addresses some of the concerns, but noted that it would be a matter of enforcement. Counselor Capone recommended, provided the entire city council with copies of the existing solicitation ordinances to show that much was already covered. The committee voted to report back to the city council with no recommendation.
Second motion.
Roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, the ayes have it. Clerk, can you please...
That was from the committee report?
Move we, uh...
Yes, we did. We seconded.
I move that we suspend the rules and take item number twenty-nine off the calendar.
All in favor? All the polls, the ayes have it.
Item number twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-nine, Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counselor Michael Marquezey and Counselor Fred Capone to amend section ten dash twenty-seven, inspection request before our committee of Article III, certificate of habitability.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to update my client, my colleagues. First, I wanna thank Assistant Solicitor Keith Slattery for his time and effort in reviewing this with me. We were able to craft some language that we're both happy with. The only issue with this ordinance was paragraph D, and we, we've come to grips with it, and I think we're both satisfied with it. I did provide a copy of this to all of our colleagues well in advance of the meeting so they could take a look at it. So other than the thanks to Attorney Slattery, I would move favorable action as presented.
Second motion and call for a question.
Just so everyone knows, this is to amend ten dash twenty-seven by deleting the current section D and adding new section D, just so we know. And I have, and I have the language.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what they, I wanted them to know what they were voting on. Okay. Favorable action. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
No.
Counselor DePiero.
No.
Counselor Hanlon.
No.
Counselor McKinnon. Oh, excuse me. Counselor Marquezey. Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
No.
And Counselor Delisola, uh, President Delisola.
Yes.
That would be five, five-four. It did not prevail.
What a personal privilege.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little disappointed that we have a piece that was spent a considerable amount of time, went through the city solicitor's office, agreed with the changes we made, that was reported to my colleagues, and after all that time, we're not gonna amend this. So we're basically left with the original ordinance, which was lacking. So that's unfortunate.
Counselor Florio.
Evidently, it wasn't to a port, to the sponsor because he left.
I was a co-sponsor.
Clerk, can you read, go back and read number five on the agenda.
Item number five. Is an order offered by Counselor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council accept a donation from the Cambridge Health Alliance of a, of a red man training suit and accompanying strike pads to be used in the rape-aggression defense training program.
Letter of thanks be sent.
Roll call vote.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon.
Yes.
Counselor Marquezey. Counselor Matusky. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delisola.
Yes. So, your clerk, can you read six on the agenda, please?
You have passed, sorry, Mr. President.
Sorry.
Item number six. Is an order offered by Counselor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as president that the Everett City Council accepts a donation in the amount of one hundred dollars from Cafaso and Sons' Funeral Home to be deposited into the Everett Police Department's donation account. Is an order offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council accepts a donation of $2,000 from Everett.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, he did.
Eight, zero. He said yes. I got him as a yes.
Thank you.
I saw his finger go up. That the Everett, number eight, is that the Everett City Council accepts a donation of $100 from Kathleen Carlotti to be used to help her family afford meals from the Healthy Meals Program.
Accept the donation and favorable action and a letter of thanks be sent.
Item seven is $2,000, and I, yes, $2,000.
We'll take the $2,000. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
Eight ayes, zero nays, Mr. President. Item?
Nine.
Sixteen is correct.
Do you read number sixteen on the agenda?
Yes. Item number sixteen is a transfer offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council approve an order to appropriate $300,000 from the CIP stabilization fund to the city clerk's archives account.
Councilor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. For you to our clerk, could you please explain what that's pending for?
Absolutely. So, all of you know that I'm not only the city clerk and clerk to this board, but I'm also the city archivist. I hold all the documents in City Hall are held in my office, except for minute amounts in departments. I'm also the city historian, so all documents come through my office. I'm running out of space, not only in my office, but obviously in the archives. The way to do this best, because state law mandates that almost every document in my office, most of them are permanent, and they're all supposed to be on paper permanently. But the way around it is to either call, microfilm, or microfiche these. So, I am looking at microfilming them, also building a database, scanning them in, and they'll go to a cloud that will be operated as me and Solicitor Mejia will be the admins to them. Every department will have access, because I don't just have city clerk documents, I have everybody's documents. Everybody will have access to their own documents. I will be the admin along with Solicitor Mejia. We'll be able to search more easily, more freely, especially for public records requests, which are more and more frequent. That comes through my office also. So, as the records access officer, me and Attorney Mejia, we went from having five to 10 a year up to 150 a year. So, it's my job, but it's becoming a little daunting, especially to go down to the archives, pull these boxes out, and make copies of everything, and then scan it in. It's a process. So, I'd like to have a company come in, do this professionally, do it correctly. So, we'll always have a microfilm backup and a cloud-based program. There will be reoccurring costs, and that's what I do recommend that you send this to committee, because I don't have the exact number, and I want to give you the exact number before you vote on this.
Okay.
There definitely will be reoccurring costs that I will have to incur in my office, but my office now is pretty much fully funded with our license and fees, so it shouldn't hurt the $5,000, $10,000 that probably it will cost. But I want to get you an exact number.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll yield the floor. I'll go to the committee.
Mr. President, thank you. I just have a question for Clerk Cornelio, and I have full confidence in the job that he does, but could we wait a few months to be able to do this? We've just seen a huge increase in our taxes, $300,000 on the table that we're talking about. I know that his department is fully self, or very close to fully self-efficient in funding themselves, but I'm just wondering if we could wait till July and wait till the new budget season comes.
So, just so you know, and I'm not the CFO, but he is here, but this is coming out of not, it's coming out of a stabilization account that's meant solely for CIP items. So, you budgeted prior so that when you have CIP funding that you need, you can put it in there. I'm in no rush. I'm actually just asking you to send it to committee so you can better understand what I'm doing. Does not mean you have to vote up or down on it.
I'm just wondering if we should?
This is something that, just so you know, I've been also in the works. It's taken me over a year to do this, because we looked at different companies trying to figure out what's best. So, this wasn't something that I woke up yesterday, asked Mr. Demus to put it on the agenda. It's taken me some time, and the assistant city clerk has been working diligently on it. So, we're just looking for you to better understand what my needs are in the office, and if you don't vote for it, no offense, but I want you, I just want to show you what I need and how beneficial it is.
Absolutely, Mr. Clerk. I definitely do not want to put out there that you rushed judgment on this. I know that everything you do is thought out and very carefully thought about. I just was wondering if we could maybe kick this can down the road a little bit, just until the new budget session. But obviously, it's something you need. You don't ask for anything more than what you need ever in your department in doing your functions. So, I'm okay with supporting it. I was just wondering if the timeline could be?
Yeah. Just so you know, by the time we actually go out, if I have to go to bid or not, depends on if I have some state contracts that we can use. This is months away, and by the time I spend it, it's probably closer to a year away. Just so you know, these CIP take time. They're not something that we can just spend right away.
Then I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was actually gonna, I just didn't think this was enough money.
Oh, it, so, this is just gonna cover my archives. It's not gonna cover other departments. I have to do it in phases. It's unrealistic to come before you and ask for $500,000, $700,000, $800,000. You know, I wouldn't do that. So, this is to get my archives under control and really reined in. So, you're correct.
Because I'm doing this for the state right now. That's why I said, this is just no way that?
I'm working with my neighboring communities. They're spending $600,000, $700,000, some of them. They've been in existence a little longer than us, so they have older documents. We date back to 1970.
But after you spend the money, and every department has whatever it needs, whatever equipment it needs, you still have to pay money to maintain it.
Yeah, that's why I told you I need this. I want this sent to committee, because I want to give you the exact amount or roughly, a rougher, a better amount on what the reoccurring cost is going to be.
Right. But I just want everybody to understand, because I don't want a year from now saying, well, you told us $300,000, now it's this.
That's why I asked to send it to committee. I want them to really understand what I'm gonna spend.
Thank you.
Prefer to ways and means?
Do you second it?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, could you read number 20 on the agenda, please?
Yes. Item number 17 is a bond order offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council approve the amount of $2,893,000 and be appropriated by borrowing as requested in the CIP general fund budget. This appropriation will fund additional projects under our capital improvement plan.
Prefer to the committee on ways and means.
Second motion. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, could you read number 20 on the agenda, please?
Yes. Item number 20 is a petition offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council approve a lodging house license renewal for the Hancock Hotel Caritas Communities at 19 Hancock Street.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is just for the clerk, as probably Counselor McGlaughlin wanted to ask the same thing. Calls for service and so forth by the police department, how does that work?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I sent them up. There have been only minor calls from these places for medical, no any violent crimes, if that's what you're looking for. Medical, and there were some traffic stops out front, which you can't associate necessarily with that property. So, I don't put them on the agenda unless, or if I do, I will give you a report. There were no bad reports from these locations. Either, yeah, either location, mostly medical.
Favorable action?
As we know, they're rooming houses.
Roll call vote.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Councilor DePiero?
Yes.
Councilor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Oh, I skipped over you, Counselor Matusky, sorry.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin was a yes. Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Could you read 21 on the agenda, please?
Item 21 is a petition offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council approve a lodging house license renewal for the Hancock Hotel Caritas Communities at 19 Hancock Street.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question is just for the clerk, as probably Counselor McGlaughlin wanted to ask the same thing. Calls for service and so forth by the police department, how does that work?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I sent them up. There have been only minor calls from these places for medical, no any violent crimes, if that's what you're looking for. Medical, and there were some traffic stops out front, which you can't associate necessarily with that property. So, I don't put them on the agenda unless, or if I do, I will give you a report. There were no bad reports from these locations. Either, yeah, either location, mostly medical.
Favorable action?
As we know, they're rooming houses.
Roll call vote.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Oh, I skipped over you, Counselor Matusky, sorry.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin was a yes. Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order.
Could you read 21 on the agenda, please?
Item 21 is a petition offered by Councilor Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President that the Everett City Council approve a lodging house license renewal for the Bill Morehouse Caritas Communities at 76 Norwood Street.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call vote.
Councilor Capone?
Yes.
Councilor DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor Matusky?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delisola?
Yes.
Nine ayes, zero nays. You have passed the order, Mr. President.
Could you read 22 on the agenda, please?
Item number 22. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Councilors John Leo McKinnon, Fred Capone, and Rosa DeFlorio that the city of Everett look into the feasibility of starting an internship program for all departments and to reach out to colleges and trade schools in the area to tap into the talent pool they may have.
Counselor Capone?
Unless there's communication from Counselor McKinnon, I would ask that we postpone it to our next meeting.
Second.
To allow him an opportunity to address it.
That was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, could you read number 23 on the agenda, please?
Yes. Number 23. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McGlaughlin that the Chief Procurement Officer and the parking clerk appear at the next meeting to discuss problems with the parking meter machines.
Mr. President, can we accept committee report placed on file and refer it back to sponsor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, could you read number 24, please?
Item number 24. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael J. McGlaughlin that the property owners and the school administration of the Pioneer Charter School Employment Street appear at the next government operations, public service, public safety meeting to discuss traffic issues in the neighborhood.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to accept committee report and actually refer this to Mayor Di Maria's office. I've also just got inundated with a bunch of phone calls again today on this issue. Cars are driving all over radically around the village again, driving down Fleet Court to drop kids off at the end of the gate. Counselor Capone and I have spent a lot of time on this issue. Thankfully, he has helped me on this issue. But we need to get to some sort of a solution for the residents of the village section of the city. I've talked to a lot of my colleagues about this issue. I asked that Mr. Earl Donald set up a meeting with the property owners at our committee report, at our committee meeting. That hasn't happened yet, but I'm sure that can happen quickly. But I think that this needs to really be looked at and carefully addressed, because the residents of the village are seeing serious issues down there with snow. There were some problems last week with the snowstorm that we had. We need to try to get this resolved once and for all for the residents of the village section. I know our hands are kind of tied to what we can do because of the Dover law, but it's causing a big problem down the village. I can't stress that enough. So, I'd refer this to Mayor Di Maria's office and ask for him to set up a meeting with Counselor Capone and myself as quickly as possible to try to address some of the concerns that we have both heard from residents of that area.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Councilor. Clerk, could you read number 26?
Counselor McGlaughlin? On item 24, was that for the mayor, sent to the mayor for action to look into it?
No.
Respond back to it. Okay, to you. Yes, sorry. I just wanted to make sure I wrote that. Thank you. Sorry, councilors. Item number 26. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese that any new piece of business that is placed on the council calendar be sent to committee without discussion. The committee reported back with a recommendation to refer back to sponsor.
Prefer to be report for back sponsor.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, could you read number 28, please?
Yes, I may. Item number 28. Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Michael K. Marchese to request approval from the state legislature to amend the city of Everett charter through the nomination and election of a charter commission. The recommendation was to refer back to sponsor.
Prefer to be report.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, could you read number 30 on the agenda, please?
Item number 30. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Fred Capone that a representative from community development appeared to discuss the end date of the Lime Bike Program, the information collected, and when all bikes will be removed from the public sidewalks. We do have a communication.
Yeah, we do have a communication. If, could you have the clerk read that, please?
To Counselor Fred Capone and the Everett City Council, this is from J. Monte, our transportation planner. I'm happy to provide a brief synopsis and update of Lime Bike Share Program in the city of Everett. The city of Everett is one of 16 communities that holds a joint contract through the Metropolitan Area Planning Council that enables and regulates Lime to operate a bike-sharing service in Everett and surrounding communities. To date, Lime Bike Share has provided over 35,000 rides within the city of Everett, mostly between the months of June, when the system launched, and November. During these months, approximately 250 trips per day were taken on a bicycle fleet, which numbered between 100 and 150 vehicles. Based on data provided by Lime, several trends could be noticed.
Clerk, could you read number twenty-eight, please?
Yes, I may. Item number twenty-eight. Mr. President, is an order offered by Counselor Michael K. Marquez to request approval from the state legislature to amend the city of Everett charter through the nomination and election of a charter commission. The recommendation was to refer back to sponsor.
Seconded. Seconded. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it? Clerk, can you read number thirty on the agenda, please?
Item number thirty. Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselor Fred Capone that a representative from community development appeared to discuss the end date of the Lime Bike program, the information collected, and when all bikes will be removed from the public sidewalks. We do have a communication.
Yeah, we do have a communication. If, have the clerk read that, please?
To Counselor Fred Capone and the Everett City Council, this is from J. Monte, our transportation planner. I'm happy to provide a brief synopsis and update of Lime Bike share program in the city of Everett. The city of Everett is one of sixteen communities that holds a joint contract through the Metropolitan Area Planning Council that enables and regulates Lime to operate a bike-sharing service in Everett and surrounding communities. To date, Lime Bike Share has provided over thirty-five thousand rides within the city of Everett, mostly between the months of June, when the system launched, and November. During these months, approximately two-hundred-and-fifty trips per day were taken on a bicycle fleet which numbered between one-hundred and one-hundred-and-fifty vehicles. Based on data provided by Lime, several trends could be noticed. Most notable were the highest ridership days were midweek, typically Wednesday and Thursdays, whereas lowest ridership days were Sundays. The variation between these days was often as much as thirty percent, suggesting that a large percentage of trips taken were trips to work and trips to school. Ridership stayed at or above one-hundred trips per day until mid-December. At the time of the system shutdown in early January, ridership was between twenty-five and fifty trips per day. While trips were made throughout the community during the season, the most common trips during December and January were between residential area of Everett and either the Gateway Shopping Center, the Chelsea Produce Market, or Everett High School. Concerning the removal of bikes for winter months, Lime is required to remove all bicycles from the city streets no later than the first significant snowfall. This occurred on Friday, January eleventh. Lime Bike will be permitted to redeploy bicycles at the discretion of the city depending on weather and sidewalk conditions. The city does not intend to allow Lime to redeploy bicycles until it can be reasonable, reasonably be expected that the sidewalks are consistently clean of any snow for the foreseeable future. It should be noted that the city of Malden allowed the redevelopment of Lime Bikes today, January twenty-eighth, and it should be expected that some of those bikes will travel to points in Everett. The city of Everett will monitor this and request removal of these bikes if predicted weather and sidewalk conditions warranted.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I do appreciate this response, but a couple of questions unanswered, I can make that phone call myself, but just to point out what we're looking for, it appears that it's fairly open-ended. So this agreement doesn't really have an end date. And I don't know what the actual agreement is with the city. I know the mayor's talked about dockless and docked bikes going forward. I think that we need to have some sort of a plan as to where they're going to be. I think that the city council should be involved in those discussions. The other thing that I've mentioned is, there's no, we're going green and that's great, and we're trying to get vehicles off the road, and that's fantastic. But at the end of the day, we're allowing a private business to use our public property for profit. Now, thirty-five thousand rides means thirty-five thousand dollars, plus the baskets are advertised. City got zero. I'm not looking to make money off these people, but what I would like to see is perhaps even ten percent. Ten percent would have been thirty-five hundred dollars. You could have used that for a program to feed the homeless. You could have used that to buy clothes for the homeless. We could have used that for the Thanksgiving feast. Could have been done something for this community, to give back to this community. I'm not looking for the money for the sake of the money, but if a company's going to be here and they're going to make a profit off of our streets, they can give back to the community. And I think that a small amount, like ten percent, we could do a lot of good with ten percent. That was thirty-five hundred dollars that we could have used for some sort of a charitable purpose. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to request that we refer the request over to the mayor's office and community development before there's any kind of a formal agreement that's entered with any other company with regards to extending out the agreement, whether it's dockless or whether it's docked bikes, that the city council has consulted and brought into the loop, and that they consider even a modest amount of ten percent so that we can turn around and do something positive with that money for the people who are most needy in this community. I put that in the form of a motion, refer to mayor's office, community development.
Second. Counselor Simmeli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you for Councilman Simmeli, and also Councilman Capone. If the telephone poles have to pay a tax and other entities have to pay tax, then why do the bicycles sit on our city streets for no tax? And more importantly, maybe instead, for this season, we missed out unless we asked the Lime Company if they may be interested in a little linkage back to the city of Everett in a future event, feeding the homeless or whatever. So it was just an idea I had to support.
Thank you.
Councilman Capone.
Counselor Paul Tano.
Thank you. I mean, I agree. This, there needs to be a little more planning with this. If it's been a successful program, great, but this should be something where, again, we're able to, the city itself can benefit beyond just the accessibility of bikes. I think it's a good idea to send it to the mayor's office, but I think I would recommend that there be a response. So this doesn't just go there and then we don't hear anything else about it until we ask the question again. So I'd ask that the, that the sponsor consider what would be a reasonable response and, and put that into the motion.
May I from the chair? Do we, we have a con, that was a one-year contract with?
If I'm not mistaken, they did say something about a year and they would reassess it in a year. So the, the year ends, I think, because it, it started in, why, I think it was because the, it started in July or June, so I think the year ends in May or June because they didn't do a calendar year. I think it actually was almost like a fiscal year by the time they started. So I think it was one full year, they were attempting to see how it worked, got the, the program run up and running, and then they were going to present us with the final results. Don't quote me, but I'm, I feel like I remember J. Monte telling us that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I think it's an excellent point my colleague raises, I would ask that we amend to have a response back by the mayor for our second meeting in February.
Have a second, seconded. All in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it? Clerk, can you read number thirty-three on the agenda?
Item number thirty-three. Mr. President, is an ordinance offered by Counselor Fred Capone, an ordinance for a dry bulk storage license.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last time it was before us, we had made a couple of amendments, and we all have the, the statute of ordinance in front of us now. The biggest one, well, the most obvious one is the title, and that's what it should be listed as, as it is. We made, I made a couple of amendments with regards to increases in the, the amount to be stored and in the event that there were any violations. But what I'm going to ask this counselor to do is to just vote on the piece in front of us without those amendments, because those amendments, I think, any license that comes in front, if it's a renewal and it's the same old business, absolutely, it doesn't need to be on this desk. But anything that has a violation, or if there's any kind of a problem or a change, what we're going to do is make an amendment to the permanent licensing ordinances, and that way it'll be consistent across the board. Because if we do have a petitioner who has violations, it's something that this body should be addressing. So with that said, we've got to hear, the only issue I take with it is the renewal fee. And I know, through you to our clerk, I know, we are in a quandary where we've never done this before, so this is new. And we don't want to charge too much, but we don't want to charge too little. And I think five dollars for every twenty-five cubic yards might be a shade too low. So, I mean, again, whatever number we use, and we've talked about it, any number we use is going to be a work in progress. So, but rather than cut our risk at five, I'd rather see it a little higher, either ten or fifteen, I don't, I don't care, I'd say ten. Just a little bit higher, we'll see how it goes the first year through, and we'll go from there. So I'd, I'd ask that we make the amendment to the annual renewal fee of ten dollars for every twenty-five cubic yards, and then after that amendment start, I'd be asking for favorable action as presented and amended.
Counselor Florio.
Now, when you say ten dollars for every twenty-five cubic yards, this is what they're storing in, in, in the facility. Whether it's mulch, sand, or, so if I, if I'm a contractor and I bring in fifty loads of sand because I have a street to do, I have a lot of driveways to do, and then that's the end, it's gone. So how are you gonna, I'm not understanding how this is going to work.
So I think it's going to be, so not I think, it is going to be off capacity. We're going to give you a lim, you're going to say, I won't store more than a thousand cubic yards. That's, that's what you're, you'll be regulated now, just like we do with the cars, right?
And who's going to enforce this ordinance? You.
Well, who else?
How many hours?
I'm the licensing authority.
This ordinance is unenforceable. I don't care what anybody says. There's no possible way that the city clerk with all these ordinances that we are putting together that he can do all this. I don't, he's not magic. You can't work twenty-four hours a day. So, I know he's very good at his job. So I find this, that we're doing all these ordinances, okay? Just remember, somebody has to enforce these ordinances, and when the budget comes up, you're going to have to hire more people. So it is what it is, and I speak very clear, because we have a problem with raising taxes, we have a problem with the business people paying too much taxes, now we want to hit them with the fees. So, I mean, I don't understand it. We have more ordinances that we cannot enforce on the books in the city of Everett and anybody else in this country. So I'm not ready to even vote for this on five dollars, never mind ten. I, I just don't want to hit the business people in the pocket anymore.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo the sentiments of Counselor DeFlorio a little bit. For quite a long time now, the business community has bearred the burden of a heavy tax rate. It's no secret. I just think this is an added tax, and then we've updated a lot of ordinance, whether it's lodging houses, flammables, whatever it may be. Now, I think this is getting a little too far. I think dry bulk's too vague of a term, where it says but not limited to certain described substances. I think it's just too vague, and I don't want to be in the business of nickel-diming, nickel and diming people that are paying up the nose as much as they can right now as it is. So I would be of no vote.
Counselor Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope my colleagues feel this way when we get to May. When we get to May and June and we're talking about the taxes, I hope my colleagues remember this conversation they had and so worried about hitting people in the pocketbook. But you know what? The pocketbook is secondary. The reality is, there's no problem enforcing this. This is a petition, I was recognized by the chair, wasn't I? Thank you.
It's the second time, which is my fault, but he still has the floor.
You know, I'll, I'll tell you, Mr. President.
Yes.
When Counselor DeFlorio's president, she can pick who she wants to pick. You're the president, I was given the floor, I'm going to speak, and I'd appreciate it if I wasn't interrupted by people who didn't have the floor.
Correct.
Thank you. It's very easy to enforce this because it's a license. The business has to come forward and renew, and our clerk just simply does the paperwork. And there's a cost to the paperwork, and this isn't tax. The whole purpose of this ordinance in the first place is not to raise money. The whole purpose of this ordinance is for public safety. We have no, zero regulation of storage. Salt, remember? We had a consideration about salt. There's no ordinance about salt. This will address salt. Remember that big pile of sand that was next to Dunkin' Donuts that we all had an issue with because there was a, a storage facility going in? Guess what? This addresses that. This has got nothing to do with hitting the businesses in the pocket and everything to do with protecting the residents of this community. Now, if my colleagues can't see that, that's fine, they vote how they want to vote. This piece has been around now for a while. Again, like the other piece that protected the homeowner against an illegal tenant inspection. That's what that other one was, but we don't want to go there either, that's fine. With this particular piece, a lot of work and time has gone into this to protect this community. That's what this does. To get lost on five dollars or ten dollars or try to reconstruct this in any way other than trying to protect the soil and the water and the air around this community is a misrepresentation.
Thank you. Counselor Paul Tano.
Ditto. No, seriously. You know, the thing is that, again, I do recognize the amount of work that's been put involved in this. We just had a conversation about Lime Bikes, utilizing Everett City property, no return to the city for this. Through the, through the chair to the clerk, how many businesses does this currently affect in the city of Everett?
Roughly?
Ballpark.
I'd say maybe a dozen.
A dozen.
I, I, don't quote me, you know, I haven't gone around and surveyed.
No, I'm looking for a ballpark figure.
That's a ballpark figure, maybe between ten and fifteen, we'll say a dozen.
We're not talking about twenty percent of the commercial businesses in the city, correct?
We have, we have eight hundred.
We're talking about a very small percentage.
We have about six hundred commercial businesses, so.
That's my point.
Something like that, yeah.
That's my point. We're not talking about something that's impacting a significant base of the city, but we are talking about something that is impacting both the environmental concerns of the city. You know, we are looking at things like the casino and the hotels and the plans for entertainment district in, in South Everett. We're looking at a city that's trying to move into the future, and, you know, allowing businesses that, you know, pile salt, pile sand, pile debris, you know, as, as a way for them to make money without us protecting our residents, I think, is inconquerable. I think it is important that we do have an ordinance in play, and I commend Counselor Capone for putting this together. Now, again, it's, it's a piece in work, because again, we really don't know, as, as already said, some of these figures may be off. But we do need to do something, and right now, we're not talking about something that's impacting a large percentage of the, of the businesses in Everett. We're looking at impacting something that's basically the type of businesses we're trying to push out of the city for, for better type of businesses. If we look at the history of what's going on down South Everett, you know, that, that has always been a heavy re, commercial industrial area. It can't stay that way forever, and it won't stay that way forever. So we need to look a little bit beyond what's there and what's going on. I think this is a step in the right direction. If the body feels it needs some additional work, then send it back to committee and work with the counselor to, to find a compromise. But right now, you know, I don't think this is a bad idea, and I will support it.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I echo the comments of Counselor Capone and Counselor Paul Tano. I think this is very much overneeded, overdue and much needed in our city to move our city forward into a new generation, into new times in our community. This is definitely not a tax-generated idea. This is something to be able to protect our residents, to protect our community. I don't think this hurts anyone. I totally agree with Counselor Capone that if we're going to talk about taxes and how we're going to be able to better serve our commercial taxpayers, let's talk about that in May, because there's a lot to talk about. Tonight, this is not something that is going to make any impact on one commercial business owner in the city of Everett, a five or a ten dollar charge per ton. I fully support this, and I echo the comments of my colleagues, so I won't continue to speak on this, and I thank Counselor Capone for bringing this forward because I think it is much needed at this time in our community.
Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I support the, the ordinance. The problem I have with it is the, the amount of money we're charging for the storage. I did a little calculation on my own, and believe it or not, that lot can hold six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand cubic yards. Now, if we take the, the number that we wanted to use as a, as a base for charging a price, which is twenty-five cubic yards, that gives us twenty-five thousand four-hundred-and-forty-four cubic yards, or twenty-five yards per, per lot. At ten dollars every twenty-five cubic yards, the price comes out to two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand four-hundred-and-forty dollars. That's a lot of money to charge them. So I think, you know, it, it looks like maybe a buck would be the, the proper amount to charge them, because you don't want to charge them two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars. That's a, that's a lot of money to charge them. And when you look at a pile, remember, a, a, a ten-wheeler that comes over here and can dump a, a pile of sand right over there, that's, that's seventeen yards, and it's a small pile. It's a very, you know, you'd think that would be an enormous pile that would cover this room. It's not, it's a very small pile. And, and I know, because that's what I use in my, my place in up north. So it's too much money. Have to come out and you have to figure out how much with the property line amount is, and you, you remember, you can't use a square on that, you have to use a forty-five-degree angle for the size of the pile and how long it's going to be. And it's going to be six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand cubic yards. That's a lot of yards, a lot of salt down there. And if you were to go over to Chelsea and look what they have, they have like eight million cubic yards, because they've gone way down the street. So it's a, it's a lot of salt, so that's too much money for them to pay, two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars a year. So I, I, it's got to come out to some amount, much, much lower than that. Might even be ten cents a yard for all I know, whatever it's going to come out to be, so.
Counselor Florio.
We've got to look at that better.
Thank you, Counsel.
If you, you have a small construction company that stores sand and, and cement because they do driveways, or in the summer, they do landscaping, so they store, store mulch. Right? These companies are already paying taxes. You're going to charge them a fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Do I have that correct? You're going to charge them a fee of two-hundred, application fee of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
One time.
One time.
One time only.
Not every year.
No, no, application fees are only for new businesses.
Okay, only for new businesses.
Correct. So you get a license and then it stays?
But you get a small company, you know, in five dollars, I mean, now we're saying ten. Five dollars seems like it's nothing, but for a small company, if they have to give you even a hundred dollars, it's a lot. I mean, you, you, you're putting everybody out of business. This isn't for big businesses, it's also for small businesses. People that go do landscaping, they're not going to go out and buy a bag of mulch for every business they have. They buy truckloads to save money, okay? If, if anybody's in business, okay, you're not in business to lose money, you're in business to make money. So I'm not against the ordinance, I'm saying enough, they're paying enough in taxes, that's enough. You want to charge them a straight fee of even fifty dollars, I don't even care at that point, but we can't charge them by the cubic yards, because you're hurting the small business along with the big. You're going to put a minimum here. So if I'm a small business and I have a truck of mulch in my yard, you're going to charge me. You didn't say there's a minimum, you didn't say it's only twenty-five cubic feet, you didn't say it's over five hundred tons. There's nothing in this ordinance that says that. You are hurting the small business along, along with the big business. We know the taxes are going to go up. When we pass the budget, we get it. We understand the taxes and we understand the budget. We've been doing it for many years, but we also understand the growth of the city and the parks and everything else. So nobody come over here to tell us what to do, that's new. I know what I'm doing.
As a president, I have a question from the chair, if that's okay? Clerk? The scrap yards, does this exclude them too?
Well.
I'm just looking at, you have a scrap yard with a massive pile.
Yep, so in our ordinances, so the minimum would be twenty-five cubic yards. Anything under twenty-five cubic yards, you do not get a, you don't need a license, you don't need a thing. It's roughly two, a little less than two large dump trucks. I mean, like a, try, yeah, I don't, I, well, try, yeah, the large ones, I mean, I don't, I don't know what they're called, I'm not in the construction business, but the, the large, extremely large trucks, is what they call them. Mr. McGlaughlin knows a little better than me. So it's about one and a half, maybe a little more, give or take. In this, it says materials, any non-flammable, dry solid substance, substance such as but not limited to cement, sand, road salt, dirt, clean fill, mulch, or rocks. So I, I believe the intent mostly is to, to license these type of materials. It does not exclude metals and stuff. That does not mean you can't draft that, you can't add and, and shall not include scrap. So you can do that because we, we do know that there is a, you know, you know, what am I trying to say? That the fees, you know, that there isn't a lot of money associated with that unless you do large volume, but that's your choice. But I do want to address a few things. One, the license is a yearly license. It is not when they bring a thousand cubic yards and they take it out and then put another cube, thousand cubic, I charge them again. It's a one-time fee at whatever the rate is. So we don't continually charge them throughout the year, it's by capacity. Two, capacity is determined, well, I mean, it would be by me and the building department, kind of what initially, how much we would max them, you know, they're going to tell us, all right, listen, I need fifty thousand cubic feet normally, and we'll say, we'll have our engineer and we'll also have our conservation commissioner, because if we're near waterways, we need to make sure that you are not near the waterway. Currently, we don't license them, so the reason we did this, and, and I understand everybody, I'm not trying to take any sides, I'm just trying to explain to you what the reasoning was. And we started this back in June, Counselor Capone and I, and then, and then Mr. Flood has assisted and really made it look much cleaner. It's, it's in a much better form, this is what he's been doing for us and helped us a lot. But the reason was, we want to make sure they're not on impermeable surfaces, correct? You know, we don't want to make sure we have water runoff. We have a lot of issues in our community dating back decades, a century, right? You know, we have a lot of contaminated land. So what the intent was, was to protect our land, our health, our kids, our waterways, et cetera, et cetera. It's not about the money. If you want to do a flat fee, I'm, I want you to know, I drafted this, the fee schedule, because I've never seen anything like this. I didn't know where to go with it, so I had to do what I could. I mean, I pretty much guessed, you know, I, I don't know. I had to learn as best I could what, what a twenty-five cubic yards was, and, and figure out the best I could at what was semi-reasonable. That's why we did this. You can, you can adopt whatever you want, you can change it. I think it, in general, is a good piece. If you want to do flat rates, that's a great idea. It's your choice. I ask you not to kill it because, forget about the time, that's my job to, to do this, but we spent months working on this. The flood spent some time on it, Counselor Capone and I. So if you want to continue to review it, do that. Just don't, don't kill it immediately without reviewing it a little bit more, is all I'm asking. Please.
Thank you. Counselor Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's funny, what I wanted to talk about is exactly what our city clerk talked about, and that, you know, you, you put this salt on the property, and let's say you, you maximize whatever it can take, but you're going to have trucks coming in and out of there to take the salt out to, to work with it. But then you're also going to have trucks in the main company bringing over to refill that thing, refill it up, so you're going to have more than the maximum amount that you could have in there. That's why I think a, a flat rate of what the, what the property would hold would be the best way to go. And again, I really don't know what that, what that would be, you know? I know there'll be a lot on the property, but I don't know what we should charge.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of respect that the people that did request it, we should send this to committee, it needs work. It's, I won't vote yes on it this evening, my vote would be no. It's too vague. Like you said, what about scrap yards? What about certain businesses? It's just too vague. It's not a knock on anybody, it just needs more work. I see the intentions are good, but I don't- I see the intentions are good, but I don't need to be told to remember a certain conversation at budget time. I hope the same member remembers that we need to hire more people to enforce these ordinances. So it's a catch-22. It's a balance. If that's how we're going to act, it's a balance. My recommendation would be to send it to Legislative Affairs.
Second.
Councilor Capone.
Just a point of personal privilege. I just want to let the folks know--
Questions can call the second. How do you say call for the question?
Yeah. Well, if I may, just a little bit of basic parliamentary procedure. Until the Chair recognizes that the question has been called, it's not there, okay? So I leave it to the Chair. If the Chair-- it was a point of personal privilege, okay? And the point of personal privilege was that this ordinance had already been reviewed by the city solicitor. I am more than happy to have it go back in the committee, because it's that important. I am so thrilled that my colleagues are so on the bandwagon about taxes and businesses. So this has been reviewed. We can review it again, but there's a lot of misunderstanding of what this ordinance is, and this ordinance has been around for a while now. So the fee that we're talking about for 25 cubic yards, every business that comes in, they're going to say, my land can hold X cubic yards. This body's going to vote on what the maximum amount is going to be, and it's a one-time fee on that maximum. They can fill that property 50,000 times in a year. It's not going to be any more money, all right? I think we're really getting away with this. I think it should go in the committee, and you know what? Why don't we make a committee of the whole? And that way, instead of me going through this with the city solicitor and the clerk, all my colleagues can ask their questions, and they can put their two cents into it, and then when it comes on the floor, we can actually vote something that's already been reviewed by everybody. So will we do it the committee of the whole?
All right. You called for the question, correct? And it was second.
The motion was for-- to refer to Legislative Affairs. It was seconded.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
You can do voice unless someone challenges--
I can do--
It's going to committee.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Go to committee.
Mr. President, if I just may, on a point of privilege. Going forward, I ask you that a member only speaks twice on a piece of business, in that when the question is called, it's called, and we take a vote.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, can you read 34 on the agenda, please?
Yes. Number 34, Mr. President. There's a resolution offered by Councilor Michael J. McGlaughlin that the administration give an immediate response to the idea of a 24-hour parking sticker enforcement for Ward 1 and Ward 6 due to casino patrons, due to casino patrons possibly taking up residential parking spots in these specific wards.
Constable McGlaughlin.
Very simple and self-explanatory. I'm very concerned about people coming down over the next six months to a year, parking on our streets, being able to get over to the casino. There's going to be a huge influxation of people coming into our city. We need to protect the side streets around South Everett to make sure that people that live in our neighborhoods can still function and still live a quality life that they expect and that they rightfully deserve. I am quite concerned about cars coming into the city, always in parking, utilizing our spots during the day, going into Boston and so forth. Thankfully, we don't see a whole lot of that happening, but I think over the next six months, there can be a serious problem if we don't carefully look at this right now. And that's why I've asked the administration to carefully look at this and to respond back immediately, so that we can get something in the works, so that if we need to draft something, or if it's going to take some time, we have some time to start to work on this. I'd refer to Mayor Di Maria's office and ask for a response back at our next meeting with his recommendations.
That was seconded. Constable Florio.
I think this is a great piece, and to me, I think we should do the whole city 24 hours a day. I think the whole city's going to get impacted by the parking. So my recommendation, if my-- I know this is my colleague's piece, is that if we could amend it by saying the whole city, for them to do a study, because even the side streets off Main Street, they've all got to get hit, every one of them. So, I mean, to me, it doesn't hurt me, because I have a large driveway, but there's a lot of people on my streets that don't have driveways, that can't-- that have to park out in the street. So if we could recommend to let them do the entire city residential parking only, I think that would be a better idea.
Constable Perro.
I would agree with that. I like Councilor McGlaughlin's idea. Those areas are certainly going to get impacted by this development. However, we have Ward 1 in particular. High Street is half of Ward 2, half of Ward 1. If we start nitpicking neighborhoods, I think it's going to get too confusing. It's resident parking. They're residents. I don't see it negatively impacting the residents if they have spots whenever they want them. It works in other cities. It's difficult at first to implement, but it works. You work out the kinks, and it works. I would support the whole city going to resident parking only.
Constable McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, I had carefully thought out-- I agree with both my colleagues, first of all, let me say that. I carefully thought this out. I was thinking if we had maybe even done from Hancock Street south down Broadway or so. The problem is, to do the whole city, to do a study in the whole city, I think is going to take a lot of time to be able to really carefully think out this program. And I was just trying to zone this area, zoom into this area, so that we could prevent-- and I agree, Constable Florio, the rest of Main Street should have included Ward 5, and I apologize to her, that Ward 5 is going to be impacted as much as Ward 6 or Ward 1. I support doing a citywide 24-hour residential parking sticker program. I just think that we need to carefully look at this area immediately and start to get the ball rolling with this area, and then maybe we build off of this and we go citywide, because the other end, thankfully, Wards 3, Wards 4 probably aren't going to see as much of an influxation of vehicles parking on the side streets. That would be my thought on this, but I support my colleagues either way if they want to go citywide. I just want the mayor to respond at our next meeting and give us some direction of how he feels about this piece.
Constable Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with my colleague from Ward 6. I just want to let the-- and again, I think we need to go citywide. Traffic Commission's been working on citywide parking for probably about four years now. So I know that that's the direction that we do want to go as a community. The only concern I have is when you go 24-hour parking here in these areas, you've got to worry about the businesses in that area, too. I do think that rather than lumping it all up, because it is-- it's a huge animal, and it is going to have an impact pretty soon. I think that the better way to go for now is to let those discussions about 24-hour parking continue with Traffic Commission, but have the administration weigh in on what they may think is the best thing to do in the short term for that immediate area, because it definitely will be impacted much more than any other. So we continue to go on the 24-hour parking Traffic Commission, but I do think this is something that we do need to get some clarification from the administration.
Thank you. Constable Paul Tano.
Thank you. You know, it is-- I think it's a good idea. I think it takes a lot of-- it's going to take a lot of planning. I mean, rather than send it to the mayor's office and then have him give us a response, I think it's important that we open a dialogue with the mayor's office on this particular issue. Perhaps a better course of action might be to send this to Public Safety, invite the mayor along. Again, we recognize that we cannot put it in. Traffic has to approve it, because they're fully empowered. But again, you know, let's get some feedback from the mayor's office. They know what's going to happen. They know what the impact's going to be. You know, the idea that this is going to be limited down to Lower Broadway is a ridiculous notion. Anybody that lives in Ward 1 knows, regardless of how far you live from Everett Stadium, on graduation night, they're almost parking in your driveway. So I mean, the thing is that this is just-- and this is going to be substantially larger than that. So I think it's more important, and it might even be more efficient, to open a dialogue between either a committee of the whole or Public Safety with the mayor's office, and let's get some direct conversation about this. We send this, you're not going to have the same passion to discuss this a month from now or two months from now when it comes back. And when it comes back, it's going to be a report that you're not going to be able to ask questions on. So let's cut to the quick, okay? This casino is opening up in less than six months. I repeat that for anyone who hasn't realized this. The casino opens up in less than six months. We can't wait a month here and a month there to bat this issue around. So I think we need to expedite this. Let's ask some representatives from the administration come before us at a committee meeting. Let's get the questions asked. Let's get some feedback out there. Invite Mr. Monti. Invite anybody else that directly has some experience in this level. Let's find out with other cities that have citywide residential parking around their businesses. Let's find out how they operate, because they're going to be the mirror here. They're going to be the template that we're going to follow. We're not going to-- we don't need to invent the wheel. We just need to look at other communities that are already doing something like this and find out how they enforce it, and if we're able to do that. So my recommendation, my motion would be to either send this to a committee of the whole and ask-- and invite the mayor and anyone else relevant to making this decision who has some feedback, members from Traffic. And let's find-- let's get this going. Let's not wait a month to hear back from them. And then what? Another month, discuss it back. Then it's going to go to Traffic. We'll be in the fall. This casino will have already been open for three or four months, and they'll be parking up on Wilbur Street. And we'll still be talking about it. So that would be my recommendation, would be to send it to committee.
Thank you, Councilor. On that motion, I've got two more speakers. Councilor Hanlon.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I just want us to think about, you know, I hear residential parking 24 hours a day. That's good, but, you know, I have a lot of my family that come to visit me. I have a lot of people that come and deliver packages to my house. You know, there has to be some sort of a thing. Maybe you can do this at night only, you know? But in the daytime, you have to have normal traffic that come and go all the time. You know, they're parked in the streets. It just has to be done. And I don't know how you're going to work that out, but, I mean, right now, we're doing it, and, you know, meal trucks can come, delivery trucks, oil trucks can come and do their thing. But at nighttime, we have residential parking in the city. So maybe that can be carried out a little bit more in the area of Ward 1 and 6. Maybe. I don't know. But like I say, I think it's a good idea to have a committee of the whole and invite them here and whoever else we want to get into it. But we've got to remember, you've got to consider-- remember when we did this? No, never mind. I won't say it. But we did say, you know, that people-- the reason we opened up the weekends is because they might have visitors that come over, you know, and they want to stay for the weekend. So that's a thing we want to think about, all that stuff. So that's all. Thank you. My two cents is what only was two.
Constable McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I took sort of the idea from the Woodard Hospital area. Councilor Seminelli has been successful up in that area of being able to help out those residents that had been dealing with an issue, and he had gotten a 24-hour residential sticker in Ward 2 for around the hospital area. And that's why I took the idea to bring it down to Ward 6 and Ward 1, knowing that there's a bigger issue and maybe a bigger discussion that need to be had. It's Constable Paul Tano's idea, which is delaying it and kicking the can. That's right. That's why I asked for a response in two weeks, because it's the fastest way to get an answer. If we refer to committee of the whole, that's a couple of weeks. If we refer to Public Safety, that's sometime in February at best, if there's an opportunity to get into that calendar. That the quickest response is for the mayor to give us something in two weeks and give us direction of where to go, so that we can work collaboratively together to be able to start getting this ball rolling, because it is-- the casino will be here in six months. Absolutely correct. I don't think that people are going to pack on Rich Street and all the streets off of Ferry Street, Woodward Street, and so many other streets on that end to go to the casino. I might be wrong, but I don't foresee that happening for this area. I see it being Ward 1, Ward 6, and Ward 5, as Constable Florio said, off of Main Street. That's why I asked for this, to be able to go forward tonight for that area specifically, and then to open up a dialogue of maybe citywide at some point down the road. Again, I'll do what my colleagues wish on this. I just think that we need to have as quickly a response as possible, and if that response could come tomorrow from the mayor, that would be great. We need to get this ball rolling now, before it's too late, as Constable Paul Tano said. It is going to be too late if we continue to kick this down the road. Thank you.
Okay. We had--
We have two motions.
We have two motions right now.
What were they? One was for-- to postpone?
One was go to Public Safety, and the other one would have the mayor's office. Go to the mayor's office.
But the mayor's office was to meet with us, right? Was it to meet with--
The mayor--
The mayor's office is to come back--
Come to our committee meeting.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion to committee, okay? First of all, if you're inviting the mayor, and I'd recommend inviting Jay Monti, I'd invite any-- and members from the Traffic Committee, you're going to invite them with enough notice that they're going to-- they should be coming here with the information we're looking for. So it's not like we're going to invite them here and they're going to hear it for the first time. So that would be, you know, so keep that in mind. When we invite a subject matter expert or the administration to come up here, they know in advance what it is we're looking for. It's on them to provide us with the details and the information. So they're not going to sit up here and say, well, we got to look that up, or they shouldn't. That would be what I would expect. So if we're going to-- if we send them to committee, then they're going to come in with the information we're looking for, and there'll be a discussion. We send it to them, to the mayor's office first, then what? Then we're going to invite them to come over to a committee and discuss it.
So you want to invite to a meeting of the whole or to a Public Safety?
Is Mr. Burley in the fact that he can give us some timeline of what a committee of the whole--
Or you want to go to Traffic?
As much as I'm opposed to committee of the whole's meetings, because they tend to bog down, and of course, if we turn all our committee meetings into committees of the whole, we might as well live up here. But on the other hand, this is a serious issue, and there's a time factor. So I think in a situation like that, everybody's going to have questions, okay? Again, we only need a quorum. We don't need to have everybody here, but, you know, as long as we have a quorum and we have the experts up here to be able to provide us with the information we're looking for, we can then explore the feasibility of a citywide--
So you want to invite to a committee meeting?
My motion would be to recommend-- would be to a committee of the whole and invite the mayor, Traffic, Mr. Monti, and anyone else that would have any relevance, you know, the parking clerk, anybody who else would have some relevance on this issue. And that would give us some guidance on where we could go from there.
Can I just ask, I heard another committee was asked for, right?
Actually, I originally had stated committee of the whole or Public Safety, but I think a committee of the whole would be the--
That was the one second. That was the one second. I didn't know if someone else made a motion. Yeah, so.
Actually.
I'll second committee of the whole, just to ask Mr. Burley that he sets this meeting as quickly as possible, that we cannot delay this meeting. This needs to be had as quickly as possible.
Do you want to, the mayor?
Invite Mayor Di Maria, invite Jay Monte, invite Traffic Commissioner, is now Joe Gaff, ask him to be here, ask Joanne Gregory, our parking clerk, to be here, and anyone else that the mayor deems or feels necessary to have input into this discussion at this committee of the whole meeting. And again, this committee needs to happen tomorrow, not realistically, but as soon as possible.
All right, so I'll get this straight. You want a meeting of the whole, you want to invite the mayor, Jay Monte, Traffic?
Joe Gaff.
Joe Gaff and Traffic?
Joanne Gregory.
And Joanne Gregory to a meeting of the whole?
Yes.
Do I have a?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we had, someone had also mentioned that we try to contact neighboring communities that have this kind of parking. And I don't know who they are, but whoever mentioned it, if they know who they were talking about, could also notify them to send in.
If it's 24 hours a day, Somerville's the most logical.
And I'll call them tomorrow. I'll call them tomorrow.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Constable Florio.
This study was already done 10 years ago. We've already been through this. It's 5 hours of 24 hours a day parking, okay? Somerville, we went by Somerville, they give out two parking permits to each household in case they have company. It's 24 hours a day parking, and every household gets a parking permit, and you better make sure you get that back when the person leaves, because if you don't get it back, you're going to pay $250 for it. So we did this 10 years ago, and the reason why it couldn't be done is because of the problem with the business people. You have to add meters. Main Street doesn't have meters. So it would hurt the business people on Main Street. If you go 24 hours a day, wherever there are businesses, you have to put meters. And that was the reason why it couldn't be done 10 years ago. Because we, I've already been through this, believe me, through numerous committee meetings, because that was the whole idea, because we had nothing in that way. And that's how we come up with the residential parking, but not on the weekends and only at night because of the business people. So if you don't add garages like Somerville and you don't add parking meters, there's no way you can do 24 hours a day parking, even on Main Street.
Well, the guests we're inviting, I think will resolve this problem at a meeting of the whole. So we had a second on that?
I said citywide.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
What did we just vote?
Judge, go to committee, Counsel Hammond, go to committee of the whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 35, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Fred Capone that going forward, community development and the mayor's office ensure that the raised bus platforms on Broadway are properly and timely cleared of snow and ice to ensure safe pedestrian passage.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that we're talking about, obviously, those two raised sidewalks over Broadway near the bus stops, and I think the intention was good. I'm not sure that it was actually needed, though, because the buses all have the kneeling capacity, and they can do the height, so I don't know why we did it, but I do know the intention was good. But at any rate, if we are going to have them, we need to maintain them. Three days after the snowstorm that we had, they were still completely covered, the ramps, the sidewalks, the platforms, completely covered with snow and ice. So nobody was accessing it. I mean, the idea is to try to better assist those with wheels, wheelchairs, strollers, anything of that nature. And if you don't have it cleared, you're defeating the purpose. So I honestly wish the administration would reconsider removing them, because Broadway, as you know, has the plows that goes by and clears the sidewalk. And this unfortunately can't be done with the plow because it'll damage it. So you have to do it by hand. So it's pretty labor-intensive. So I would ask that they consider maybe removing that, especially in light of the fact that the buses do have the capacity to adjust the height. But if the administration feels that this is serving a legitimate purpose and it is more beneficial than not, then we absolutely have to maintain it. And we can't wait three days out and let Mother Nature melt it. It's got to get cleared out, because if it is serving a purpose, it needs to serve that purpose all the time. So I just want to send this as a reminder to the mayor's office, community development, that unfortunately, both sides of the street were left unshovelled for three days after, and it was only because of the melting that it actually cleared to better enable pedestrians' access. So I just want to refer to both those places for the future.
Thank you. Have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Clerk, can you read item number 36 on the agenda?
Item number 36, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin that Dr. Easy from the Office of Organizational Assessment appear at the next council meeting with any assessment reports that have been conducted at the Health and Wellness Center for the past two years on all employees and functions of the department, as well as any recommendations that have been made also.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, thank you. This item will go along with item number 37. Let's make sure that we understand one thing, okay? We've heard a lot in the newspapers recently about the Health and Wellness Center. I want to make it very clear that I'm not a shield for any individual or business owner in the city of Everett. I've been contacted numerous times by people that attend the Wellness Center, people that are employed at the Wellness Center, people that travel to Wellness Center. I have serious questions and serious answers that I'm looking for on this matter. The words that have been thrown out is fake news. It's not fake news, ladies and gentlemen. There has serious questions need to be asked. I'm going to ask that the, item 36 and 37 get laid over for one week so that we can ask some questions. I'm going to put my questions in writing and hopefully get some truthful answers once and for all about what is going on at the Health and Wellness Center. So I'd ask that we table item number 36 and ask Dr. Easy to come before us in two weeks, and I will submit questions to him between now and two weeks so that he is prepared to answer some of the questions that I have. And knowing that from there may generate other conversations, I don't want to be told that only ask what is asked. A conversation develops as you have one. I want to make sure that that is clear.
Second motion.
On the motion, Counsel DePero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand the council's concerns. I just don't think this has any business being discussed in the public arena. If he does want to talk to these individuals, it should either be done personally or in executive session. I'm fine with that. This is a personnel matter, and it should not be discussed in public. Both matters.
Counsel Matuski.
Just a question to the sponsor. Dr. Easy, is, will he be knowledgeable about these events happening at the Wellness Center? Is that his job? That's my question to the sponsor. I mean, I don't want a department head coming up here and saying, "Well, it's not, it's all rumor," you know, if it's not true, why even come? Similar to the Law Department that was here, and, geez, nothing's happening here. But if it is true, they should be here and explain what exactly is happening down there. I mean, if there's a problem, we should actually be aware of it as council members. And I just want, that's directed to Counsel McGlaughlin.
I'll say, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. President, through you.
There's no must be against Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. President, through you, I can answer Counsel Matuski's legitimate question, which is that I'm looking to see if Dr. Easy, which his job is to go department to department throughout the year and give assessments. Maybe something's working, maybe something's not working. What recommendations may he have made throughout the year in any department? That's his job. So I'm hoping that he has visited the Health and Wellness Center and has oversaw the functions of the facility. And if he has made recommendations, have they been taken by the administration? Maybe he hasn't. Maybe everything is going wonderful. But that's the information that I'm looking for. That is his job, is to go every department throughout the city and to be able to give an assessment and be able to oversee what's working and what's not working. So hopefully, that will be what he'll be able to provide for us.
Do you make a motion?
To Counsel DePero's point, the reason that I don't think it needs to go into executive session, I'm not asking for any one in particular person, I'm asking for the department as a whole, which I think the people at home have a right to know. It's their taxpayers that are paying the salaries. The taxpayers' money that is footed in the bill to be able to run these programs, they should be at home knowing whether or not what they're spending is working or not working for their tax dollars. If we were going to zoom in or signal out one individual or one function, then absolutely it should go into executive session. Nobody should be talked about individually. But I'm talking about a department as a whole to be able to see what's working, what's not working. If there are problems, then we can go down that road and we can address that in a different way in executive session or whatever is deemed necessary. So that would be, to my point, would be that we're able to have this discussion, because it's about a department, it's not about one individual. So I would ask, respectfully ask that item 36 get laid over for two weeks and ask Dr. Easy to appear to answer generalized questions about the department as a whole.
Second motion.
On the motion, Counsel DePero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not disagreeing with my colleagues, but as Counsel McGlaughlin said, questions do arise during a conversation. He cited some newspaper reports and so on, and I do feel that certain questions will certainly arise, which is why this should be conducted in executive session. It's personnel matters, it should not be discussed in public. Thank you.
Counsel DePero. I mean, I'm sorry, Counsel DeFlorio.
There's no reason why we can't have the meeting, then if anything arises, we can always move to executive session. So, no.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be advertised. Does it have to be advertised?
Executive session, according to the open meeting law, has to be advertised. You have to give the reason. There are 12 different, 10 different provisions. You have to state it in the order and why you're going in, because the public needs to know why you're doing executive session. That's by the open meeting law.
Right, but if, if people come over here in two weeks and Counsel asks questions that they cannot answer, they can say, "We're unable to answer this," then we can postpone it to the following week to call for an executive session.
You just can't do it at that meeting, is what I'm saying.
And that's it. I think that's the easiest way, and that way, nobody gets hurt, and the public knows that what we're doing and the questions can't be answered. So that's my opinion.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to give you what the, that you couldn't do that evening.
So Counsel, you want to send this to next meeting, correct? Hold us all to the next meeting? Postpone us to next meeting? Have a second on that?
If he's in the, Dr. Easy's, if you want. Oh, yeah.
Counsel Matuski, you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I do support my colleague to my left on going into executive session, because I know that it's going to happen, and I know that even if it doesn't happen, you're going to see heads going together and whispering, and people are going to be asking, you know, "What's going on here and what happened?" And even if we were to send out a report that doesn't include anything in there, people are going to say, "Why didn't you?" Because the whole city knows something about what's going on at the health center. So I would, I would say that it's got to go into executive session, because absolutely positively, it's going to wind up being involved in people who have private business in there that should not be exposed to the public. So I support my good pal over here.
Thank you. Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, the piece itself is just looking for assessment reports, and that's the function of Dr. Easy's office, and that's what the counselor is looking for. So as my colleague from Ward 5 had mentioned, have the meeting. What he's asking for is legit, and it does not implicate anything in the executive session. Now, if a question is, leads to another question, it leads to a topic that does, as has been stated, well, then we suspend further conversation with regards to those topics, and then we set it up for executive session. But the piece in front of me and what's being requested by my colleague is, he's looking for assessment reports of the department, and that's public business, and everybody has every right to see that. And it's not valid to go into executive session. Again, if something comes up and it needs to go, then so be it. But what the sponsor's looking for is legitimately public property and should be in the realm of public property.
Second on that?
On the motion. They have the motion, meaning second to postpone it.
So Counsel, you want to postpone us to, to two weeks?
So, Mr. President, just on the motion, I want to invite up Dr. Easy in two weeks, not postpone her. I want to invite up Dr. Easy in two weeks with this information that's attached to item 36.
But that's what the order is, so.
That's what the order is.
Postponing it does the same thing, because it's in the order.
Just postpone her for two weeks, and he's on this piece anyways.
And he'll be.
And we had a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Yeah.
Clerk, can you read number 38 on the agenda?
No, I know that.
37.
Yep, 37.
I thought you put them together.
No, we didn't. Item 37, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin that Laura Webby, the Director of Human Resources, appear at the next council meeting to explain the management structure of the Health and Wellness Center and to provide any changes in management in that department in the last year.
Mr. President, again, item 37, just make the same motion we just did, that we invite up Ms. Webby to the next meeting to give some information that is generally known.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Now I'm here to read number 38.
Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Stephen Simonelli that is on to the mayor or someone from his office appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting to explain why the city took away 19 public parking spots in Everett Square parking lot behind the post office for city-owned vehicles.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. True for Counselman Simonelli. Refer this piece to G.I.O.P.S.
Second motion.
Will I second it?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Counsel, can you read, yeah. Clerk, can you read number 39, please?
Yes, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Stephen Simonelli that is on to the mayor or someone from his office appear at the next Government Operations Committee meeting with an update on improvements to Air Force Road, as well as other work that is needed in that area.
Counsel Simonelli.
Mr. President, through you, Counselman Simonelli, refer this piece to G.I.O.P.S.
Second motion.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
And the final agenda, right?
The last piece on the agenda is number 40, please.
Mr. President, this is a resolution offered by Counsel Stephen Simonelli that is on to the mayor or someone from his office, update the city council on when the dedication for Counsel Joe King at Front Street Park will be.
Counsel Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. True for Counselman Simonelli. Why has the administration take so long to honor Counsel King for this dedication? Almost two years, and we're requesting a written statement back from his honor of the mayor.
Second motion.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. And motion to adjourn?
We're doing better, because at least.